Members here, yes, we do. So at this point in time, we now call this meeting to order. If you could please rise if you are available and able and pay attention to Councilman Duncan for the invitation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Duncan.
All right. Thank you very much. I would like to introduce this evening the Reverend Tori Lightcap, who became Dean of Grace Episcopal Cathedral in January. Come on up here. I am a Cradle Episcopalian lifelong. I was baptized at St. David's Episcopal Church there on Seventeenth Street, and 44 years later, they can't get rid of me, and I still attend there. So I don't know if that's good or bad, but before that, Tori was Canon of the Ordinary for the Episcopal Diocese of Kansas, where he served the entire Episcopal Church, this portion of the state. I joke now that I serve him because he also happens to be a constituent who lives in my district, District Eight. For the past 15 years, he has served congregations in Texas, Iowa, and Colorado. He is married to Jacqueline Whitney Lightcap, who also serves on the USD 437 Board of Education and works for the Legal Women Voters of Kansas. They have two children, Gabriel, 16, and Annie, 13, and I'm very glad he was able to come here this evening. All yours, sir.
Thank you. Let us pray. Lord God Almighty and gracious, we pause at the threshold between the busy day past and the long night before. We give you thanks, O God, for the fact of our lives, that we have the capacity to gather, to deliberate, and to decide upon complicated issues and among important values, and we thank you that we live in a land where these things can be freely entered into. Energize and motivate this council, we humbly pray, that they may be animated by wisdom to commit to actions that better the lives of all those whom they have been called to serve. Inspire them, O Lord, with the zeal for justice through acts of mercy, achieving a lasting peace, for that is your vision for our world. These things we pray in the name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We move on to the appointments if the clerk would read.
Mayor, roll call.
Roll call, please. Oh, roll call.
Mayor De La Isla. Councilmembers Hiller. Valdivia Akala.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Emerson. Padilla.
Here.
Nager.
Here.
Dobler. Duncan.
Here.
And Lesser. Nine present.
Deputy Mayor is unable to be here. He had a prior engagement and sends his regrets, but I'm sure that he'll be watching. At this point in time, we now move on to the appointments. It is the clerk would read.
The appointments, 2A, Board Appointment recommending the reappointment of Champagne Lloyd to the Topeka Human Relations Commission to fill a term ending June 30, 2022. 2B, Board Appointment recommending the appointment of Luke Benzeman to the Topeka Human Relations Commission to fill a term ending June 30, 2020. And 2C, Board Appointment recommending the reappointment of Michaela Sanders to the Topeka Sustainability Advisory Board for a term ending June 30, 2020.
We have heard all of the individuals seeking appointments or reappointments onto the boards. The mayor does not have a vote in this matter. What is the pleasure of the body? I move to appoint. We have a motion for approval by Councilwoman Nager, and I think I saw a second by Councilwoman Ortiz. Any comments or discussion on this item? Seeing none, we proceed by voting. If the clerk would call the roll call for the vote.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmembers Hiller. Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Padilla.
Yes.
Nager.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
And Lesser.
Yes.
We have eight?
Yes, Mayor.
Eight having voted yes, the motion passes. I would like to recognize Mr. Luke Benzeman and also Champagne Lloyd, who are present in the audience. Thank you so much, both of you, for your commitment to serving our community and being active in the form of government. We so appreciate your efforts. Thank you very much. And moving on to presentations, if the clerk would read. The first presentation, I'm sorry, is the Use of Force Policy and Process Review, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have a couple of presentations. The first one, Chief Cochran will go through Use of Force and other policies. This is something that Councilwoman Valdivia Akala had requested, that we review some of these items and have presentations. These two will be done this month, and then we'll have one at the next meeting. And then the other one regarding oversight boards will take a little longer for us to research and get prepared, but we wanted to get these three that we could now, so we'll do two this week and one next week. So, Chief Cochran.
Mayor, City Manager, Governor Body, thank you. One of the things that I sent out a little over a week ago was several policies and then some hot topic issues that I say are hot topic issues that I've noticed going on nationally, and so provided you that type of information and oversight or overview. And so one of the things I wanted to go ahead and update is on the 4.213 duty to intervene. And one of the things that we did, we did change the terminology on that already and looking at that and removing the highlighted in yellow, if you guys have that email that I sent you, and removing the word "obviously" and went in a position to do so. So that one is, or that policy now reads, "Any officer present observing another officer using force that is illegal or clearly beyond that which is objectively reasonable and the circumstances shall safely intercede." So the wording that was taken out was "obviously" and then went in a position to do so. So we've already updated the policy to reflect that. And so really, having those policies and stuff, really just wanted to give you the opportunity, if you had any additional questions or whatever, as we know, Councilwoman Hiller provided a lot of questions, and that feedback was provided. And so really, want to kind of give you the opportunity, if you have any additional questions that you want to ask for some follow-up, you have the policy. The policies are also available online, and so that's really kind of where we're at as far as the Use of Force Policy, if you have questions.
At this point in time, do anybody, does anybody have any questions for our Chief of Police? Councilwoman Valdivia, it's going to be bow by Councilman Duncan.
Let me get off on mute there. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for bringing this forward. I have a number of questions, and I hope that I'm going to be in some type of order here. If not, I would ask that you bear with me. I am, I do have all of the printed information out. In addition, I have received some information from some community leaders in the Black community that I would also like to discuss, as well as some of the budget issues or budget questions I have that have to do with the use of police force in schools. And I think that you're, you know, obviously, you're correct. What is the catalyst for bringing this forward this evening is the nationwide calls and local calls and statewide calls that we are seeing that many people feel of all colors, but especially to vulnerable Black communities, that something has to change with policing. So with that, I had reached out to a number of folks to see what were some of the priorities, and again, we'll be going over over those shortly, but I did seek some clarification on some of the Use of Force. And the clarification I asked, it may already state in the procedure manual copies that you have given us, but I do that because we need to be transparent about this. Not everybody can just pull this up off of the Internet. So if I ask what maybe appear to be a redundant question or something that is in this manual, it's because I believe it's important that the public hear it as well, so please bear with me. I'm looking at the 4.2 Use of Force, going down to 4.2.12 prohibited uses of force. And I just want to clarify again for transparency for the public, Sections E and F. Tell me if you're there. I don't want to get ahead. I know I can go fast sometimes. Are you there with me?
What was, what number?
4.2.12 under Use of Force.
Is that the Use of Force Policy?
It's the Topeka Police Department Policy and Procedure Manual, 4.2 Use of Force Subject.
4.4.12.
12.
That confused me, too. 12, prohibited uses of force.
Okay. That there.
And then out of 4.2, it comes under Section 4.2.12, prohibited uses of force. Okay, I just want to re, I just want to reiterate.
Okay.
For the public. If we look at letter E, it states officers shall not use any type of neck restraint or chokehold unless deadly force would be authorized. That is the current policy that we have in place, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so chokeholds overall, it's not something that we see is is an issue that we're having with the TPD.
No, we don't, we don't utilize chokeholds, and we don't do, we don't do anything around the neck or on the neck.
Okay, thank you. And F, binding the hands and legs together, followed by bending the legs up and securing them to the hands or hogtied is prohibited. That is something that is not used in the Topeka Police Department, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Chief. There is another section here that I wanted to touch on. This has to do with items that were brought forth by, and let me just read some of these off, Dr. Glenda Overstreet, the Lynx Incorporated National Coalition of 100 Black Women, the Black Women's Agenda, Black Women's Roundtable, the Kansas People of Color Political Think Tank and Action Coalition, and part of a joint statement as well from the NAACP and Lynx Incorporated. And what I'm actually looking at is action items that they have formulated to eliminate police brutality and address police reform. And under Use of Force, because I'm not familiar with the contract and because I do not know if all of these manuals that you have provided to us cover every single thing, I need to ask you about a couple of things that they're looking at under the Use of Force Policy. What they are looking at is the move to require a fun, no, let's move away from that, I'm sorry, mandate zero tolerance approach in prosecuting officers who kill unarmed, nonviolent, and nonresisting individuals during an arrest. Is there anything that we currently have at that time, at this time, either in the procedural manuals or in the contract with the union?
No, because charging is is up to the District Attorney's Office. Charging is up to the District Attorney's Office, and so if there's a crime violated or whatever, because officers are supposed to obey the law, just like everybody else and and all that stuff, so the District Attorney's Office would want to be the termination. So there is not, there's not a need for something like that in the policy or the Use of Force policy, because it lays out that if you do something illegal, violate the law, or what have you, the District Attorney has authority to file charges.
Okay, so that, that information, that sentence that I just read off lies specifically with the District Attorney then, correct?
Yeah, charging, charging lies with the District Attorney.
Okay. Also, decertifying or terminating police officers who use lethal force in nonviolent offenses. Is that something that is also relegated to the District Attorney, or is that something that can happen at the local level, or do we have in our policies?
It can happen at the local level. It can happen at the department level. Somebody violates policy, then they can be terminated. Decertification is done through CPOST, which is in Wichita. They're certifying, they're the, they're the body that is appointed by the State of Kansas that reviews law enforcement certificates, and so they have the authority to pull certificates or not. And so there's several different processes or layers there. If you violate policy, you can be terminated, suspended, disciplined, or what have you. Then the District Attorney, they can also file charges if he or she deems necessary, and then your law enforcement certificate is then reviewed by CPOST, and CPOST can either pull it or not pull it. And if your certificate is pulled, then of course you can't get a job as a law enforcement officer anywhere else.
Is, thank you, Chief. Is that anything that is listed in the procedural manuals on conduct, you know, how the, how things are supposed to go, or in the contract?
Well, in the Code of Conduct, all that is laid out that you have to, you don't, you know, don't violate policy, you don't break the law, you don't commit crimes and all that stuff. And so that's how it's laid out in the Code of Conduct policy. It lays out all the conduct, and then, like I said, then policy or then policy and discipline then follows. And so discipline can range from a written warning up to termination, and then just because I terminate somebody does not necessarily necessarily mean that CPOST is going to pull their certificate. And so you can be fired by an agency and still go get a job someplace else if their certificate is not pulled. And so when we talk about police reform, I think one of the things that we need to look at at the state level is CPOST and what, what criteria they use to pull certificates. And I think that that's a very important place for reform, because officers resign or quit maybe before they get fired, if they know that they violated. And so what we, we do at the Topeka Police Department now, since I've become the chief, is if you resign or quit under investigation, we continue out that investigation. And then if you're, if we believe your certificate should be pulled, then we send that down to CPOST for them to review. But if they resign or whatever before, they can still go get a job someplace else. And so when we talk about police reform, I think one of the areas that we really need to look at is the credential agency for the State of Kansas, which is CPOST, and what their criteria is to pull a certificate.
Okay, thank you. I thought I saw something in the incredible amount of paperwork we received on these printouts, but currently, is there a mandatory requirement that officers render medical aid to all people, including those that may have been wounded by a police officer?
Yes, we have a duty to provide medical attention in our policy.
And is it in so long of a period? I know sometimes in videos that I've seen across the country, the victim has laid there, I think in the case, since we are talking about, you know, Black Lives, where Michael Brown laid in the street in Ferguson in a hot humid weather for an extended period of time. I know I've seen, I've heard that some believe that he could have received medical care and did not, but is there a stipulation that states how, how many minutes or whatever before someone?
No, there's, there's no timeline. What we train our officers is, is as soon as safety allows them to do so, they're to provide medical attention to the individual.
And that safety is, could be any, any number of things?
What's that?
That safety, as you know, they are safe to do so, that they can, they are to render aid, but I would imagine there's a number of criteria that would constitute safety.
Well, it's when the officer feels that they can safely do so. That's one of those things that's pretty hard to give a mandate that you have to do in with such amount of time. One of the things, you have to make sure that, you know, everybody can, is safe, once the situation stabilized. The hopes are that they render aid relatively soon and as quick as possible, because as we know that if deadly force is utilized, then medical attention is is the key to survival.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Is there something where I, I know, I think I remember reading that not all TPD out, out on the streets, they don't all have body cameras yet. I think that there's still a shortage, but are there mandatory cameras on all cars, correct?
We do not have in-car cameras. We have body worn cameras. We're authorized 299 personnel. We got 225 cameras in the field, and basically, every uniform personnel, individual who works the streets or works calls, is issued a body worn camera. And then one of the things that I did, I expanded the policy last year to include if you are a plainclothes detective and you work extra duty security and you wear a uniform, you have to wear a body worn camera. So we've, we have a lot of body worn cameras in the field. So if you're working the street, you're working the calls, community police officers, field operations, school resource officers, response team, those individuals that deal with the public on a call service type basis, all have cameras.
And is there any type of discipline that can occur if the body camera is turned off?
Absolutely. If it's turned off before the contact is over, or if it's not turned on when the contact begins. And one of the things to try to help ensure that that policy is, is upheld by the officers. We, Last Academy, the one that just graduated, were issued body worn cameras the first week. And Academy before that got them about halfway through, and anytime that they're engaged by an instructor or a presenter, they have to turn their body worn camera on, and what that is for is to get that muscle reflex, that automatic response that when you receive a call and you're going to a call for service, that you activate that, your camera. And so, yes, discipline, and we, we and I have disciplined many officers for not obeying that policy, because we have a mandatory activation policy.
After so many disciplines, if it's the same officer, what happens?
Well, we have progressive discipline according to the contract, and so if they violated a total of four times, then they're probably going to be terminated, and that's the progressive discipline, because it's a, an offense that, it falls under the progressive discipline of the contract, and so they get a caution, counsel, cautioning the first time, then a written reprimand, then suspension, and then termination.
Has an officer ever been terminated? I'm not asking for names.
No, no, an officer's never been terminated under that policy, but I can also tell you an officer's never been disciplined more than once for that policy. Once they're disciplined, they, compliance is, and that's the whole purpose of corrective action. Corrective action is to correct behavior, and so when the disciplines are issued, we've not had that issue with another officer, an officer before.
There was something in here that I wanted to ask also about the youth outreach. I know Karen, or Councilwoman Hiller had given like two pages of questions to ask you that we received answers on, and I think on one of those pages, we were looking at the numbers for the dollars on outreach, and I'm looking at school resource officers, and it looks like salaries and benefits are $782,319.65, with camp supplies at $340. Can you tell me how, when it started for school resource officers to be in schools? How long that's been in effect?
With the Topeka Police Department, it's, it's changed over time, school resource officers, dare officers. I was a dare officer back in 1990, and that's drug abuse resistance education. So there's been officers in the schools for quite a long time. The school resource program was an evolution of those, and that was one of those programs in conjunction with USD 501, that we, you know, expanded that program and more officers were put in the schools at that middle school. The one time, we're at the middle school level and the high school level, and now we're at the middle school level, but with the TCAL program, the Professional Education Program, we are back in the high schools, but that's a program in which the police department absorbs that cost completely, so it has nothing to do with the school resource program.
Okay, I'm not understanding absorbing the cost. The numbers that I just gave, that's part of your budget, your over $40 million budget, correct?
The school resource officers, yes.
Okay, and so now you're in middle schools, and now you're in high schools, and is this across 501, every 501 middle school and every 501 high school?
What we do at, it is at the middle school level. At the high school level, we just have, starting in August, we'll have three officers, and we have one officer that teaches a freshman curriculum, and these officers are also have their teaching certificates, their substitute, emergency substitute license, so they're educators. And so we have a freshman curriculum. We'll be starting the sophomore curriculum in August, and then we have the TCAL program for juniors and seniors out at the TCAL building.
And one high schools, all the high schools in 501?
Yeah, the, the main high schools, the three, Topeka High, Topeka West, and Highland Park, and they teach a core curriculum. It's actually a class that students sign up and take. It's a, it's an actual curriculum program. It's an actual curriculum program. And so right now...
Yeah, why isn't 501 paying for that if they're teaching?
Well, this is one of those programs that when we talk about engaging our youth and how do we help educate students to become, and hopefully train, young people to want to be a police officer, this is an education program that I felt was extremely important, that we engaged that youth because we didn't have anything for the high school age kids. And so this was a way that I felt that we could engage them in a constructive educational setting. And so that's why they don't pay for that program. That is something that I approach them with because out at TCAL, that's a professional strand, one of the seven strands that they teach. And that provides those young people also with the opportunity for college credits and to help get them into college.
So do these teachers, these police as teachers, do they wear civilian clothes during that time?
Currently, they wear a uniform. But one of the things in talking with USD 501 and administration, they're going to be going to a softer uniform starting in August, all of our school resource officers are. They're going to be wearing a black polo and khaki pants, and part of that is to try to ease that confrontation possibility, you know, where people have anxiety, or young people have anxiety seeing the uniform. And so it's more of a casual dress, dressed down uniform.
And one more question on that because I didn't know at all that police were teaching in the high school. As part of this teaching that the police do of these young minds, are they taught the history of policing in the United States?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite get that.
Are they taught, are these young minds, are they taught the history of policing in the United States?
They're not taught the history of policing. The curriculum that they teach is based upon police activities and how that's performed. The history of policing, though, that's a good question. I think that's probably one of the things we ought to look at. In conversation I've had with individuals also is the number, as everybody knows, there's a ton of laws on the books. And as a young person said to me, how are we supposed to know all those laws? How are we supposed to know what we're supposed to do and not to do? And how come there's not a class in school to teach us about laws? And I said, well, that's a very good point. So I think you raise a very good point. The history of policing, I think, is very important. And then also, the individual that said to me about laws and ordinances. And so that's one of the things that we are looking at in that program. And is that another class that's taught? And that's conversation that we have to have with 501. Part of the problem when we have a curriculum, and they approve the curriculum, and the curriculum's approved by the state and all that good stuff, there are only so many hours in the school day for the schools, and they have certain criteria that they have to hit. And so when we look at adding classes and stuff like that, they become electives or whatever, and not so much a mandatory class. And so when they become an elective, then we reduce the number of young people that's touched. Right now, our programs are elective classes, but I think that's a very good point that you raise. And the history of policing is extremely important, and I think a lot of people would benefit from classes on the history of policing.
Okay, thank you. And talking of the subject, which I know is considered extremely taboo, but we have to talk about, or at least I have to say it, because I've been getting questions about it and emails about it, is qualified immunity.
Mm-hmm.
Is the issue of qualified immunity something that is automatically written into the TPD contract? And the second part, or a second question, is if there is found to be gross violation and negligence by a Topeka police officer, can they be fired immediately at your discretion, the mayor's discretion, and the city manager's discretion? I know those are two separate questions, but I just wanted to get them out.
Well, two separate questions, but two extremely important questions. Qualified immunity is something that's granted by the courts and not by contract or by policy. And so when qualified immunity started, the intent was very good because what it was is to provide protection to those individuals that were doing the right thing for the right reasons and something bad happened. It was never put in place to protect an officer or anybody else who knowingly violates the law or violates the Constitution. And so how it got to there is something that the courts have done. So qualified immunity is extremely important, but it's also one of those things that was never intended to protect, you know, somebody who violates the law or breaks the law and things like that. And when you do that, you can be terminated at any time. And so one of the things that takes into consideration, we take into consideration is the complete investigation, and then those cases are referred to the DA's office, and then the DA's office makes a review of them. So we talk about qualified immunity. It's one of those things that really hasn't been looked at since the 1960s, and it's probably time to review that. But I think qualified immunity is extremely important because it's very difficult getting individuals into this line of work as is. But holding people accountable is extremely important. And so, like I said, qualified immunity was never intended to protect somebody who does something wrong, okay? And that is established by the court. And the second one, I'm sorry, was...
So if there was a blatant act that was deemed across the board to be wrong, illegal, immoral, perhaps hate-based, et cetera, does your position as a chief, and I don't know if it would include the mayor and the city manager, can a police officer be fired immediately?
Immediately is an interesting term. I mean, there's going to be a couple days because there will be some type of investigation that has to take place. But if we have a gross violation, negligence, or whatever, I'm sure that human resources and city legal would uphold my desire to terminate somebody. And, you know, terminating employees is a big step. But if they violate the law, they knowingly violate your constitutional rights, when they knowingly do things like that, then yes, termination is warranted, but it's probably not going to be within hours. There's going to be some time in there, and with some investigation and then consultation with the city legal as well as HR on the disposition of that employee.
Right, yeah. I guess when I meant immediately, I wasn't, you know, meaning on the spot. But I just, before ending this, and I thank you for your patience, one of the things I will say that people have been sending me and some groups that I've been talking with, and I don't know if you've had a chance to see it, has been this Eight Camp Wait. It is one of the first steps towards real police reform. You know, the first one is banning chokehold, strangleholds, which it sounds like we don't have, we're not participating in. Number two, require de-escalation, and I think that definitely that's something that could always use more hours. Number three, require warning before shooting. Number four, requiring exhausting all alternatives before shooting. Number five, duty to intervene. Number six, ban shooting at moving vehicles. Number seven, require use for continuum. I don't know if I know what that means. And number eight, require comprehensive reporting. I would also add that I am going to be looking into, as we have seen the case that happened with the young black man in, oh, it was in Georgia. I can't remember where it was, in the Wendy's parking lot, when he was running away and shot in the back. I, you know, definitely think that that is something that we should look at as well. I think, I hope this is not the only dialogue that we're going to have on this, this one city council meeting, because I think that there is a movement of individuals, young folks, older folks, of all colors, that want to see more than lip service. And so I hope we can continue this dialogue, and I do appreciate you taking the time to answer these questions for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with the Eight Camp Wait. That's something I was researching several years back, back when I was a major in the detectives bureau. So I'm very familiar with that. I'm very proud to say that we conform to those. The force continuum is one of those things that has come in and out of policing over time. And what the force continuum is, is basically if somebody does this, then you respond with this level of force. If they do this, then you respond with that. So that's the continuum of force. And so in law enforcement, that's one of those things, we used to have a continuum of force, but then it's one of those things that, like anything else, you know, reform or whatever within the industry. And so the force continuum is one of those things that comes in and out of play. And so the use of force policy we have is basically the officer can respond to whatever the individual. There's not a, you know, we talked about de-escalation, and you talked about, well, we can always use more de-escalation hours. I think anybody can, but one of the things that we have to understand is de-escalation a lot of times isn't the answer to everything because the individuals in which a lot of times force is used don't de-escalate, if that makes sense. I mean, they're in a state. And so I'm very proud of where we're at at the State Police Department because we do a lot of de-escalation training. And, you know, if the, you know, city council wants us to do 40 more hours, we'll do 40 more hours. But I'm telling you right now, we do a lot of de-escalation training. And, you know, I've opened it up to the city council members, you know, to come out and view all the training. You've come out and viewed some of our training and observed it, and I appreciate that. I open that up to other city council members. I also offer up the opportunity of city council member, we've done it before, but offered up, if you want to do a ride along to kind of see what takes place out there on the streets. I know my daughter is volunteering. She'll take any of you out if you want to go on sex shift.
Just to respond, Chief, I have been on a ride along back in my college days. Also, you know, it was very eye-opening for me to be at that half-day for the cadet training. I'm also going to say in this meeting what I asked about in the cadet training, because we have to look at the realities of where we are at in history at this moment in time. And you have already said that, you know, there were, yeah, considering the history, you know, teaching the history of policing in the United States, you know, for high school and middle school, these tender-aged kids, tender and rowdy. But also, I think it's imperative that we, that cadets understand the history of policing.
In the academy, yeah, in the academy, we do a class, actually, the history of policing, taught by Sergeant Ruben Salamanca. And so we do cover that in the academy. And then Officer Kane Davis comes in and does instruction as well. Yeah, the history is extremely important. We have to understand where we came from.
And also, I think everybody knows about Black Lives Matter. Everybody seems to know about, you know, black and brown issues. But we have to be brave enough, and I think Councilwoman Hannah Nager and Councilman Spencer Duncan did a very brave thing when they talked about in meetings a couple of weeks ago about white privilege, white fragility, and even go so far as to understand issues that are occurring in this country with white supremacy. That not pointing fingers at the police force, what I'm saying is it's time for these hard dialogues to be had. Because dialogues can be had with the black and brown criminals that have turned themselves around, and dialogue is important to have with pastors that have experienced racism themselves in heart-wrenching situations. But what about the other issues that is causing such a crescendo in this country? Those are something too that our cadets should be learning about. So that's, thank you again, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for listening and for answering the questions.
Thank you very much. I'm excited that we, as a council, have been having this conversation for a while, and like Councilwoman Valeria Alcalá said, we will continue having these conversations. Councilwoman Duncan, you've been patiently waiting.
No worries. I've got just a few questions. All right, Chief, walk me through, I want to be a police officer, walk me through the process of applying to the day of a cadet. What's the evaluation process of an officer?
Yeah, so once you apply with the police department, you fill out an interest card. We let you know when the testing is. You come, you take a written test, you pass that, then you take a physical agility test, you pass that, and then you're assigned a background officer. You're provided about a 16-page application, references and all that stuff, hit work history. You get a background officer. Once that application's turned in, that background officer then looks into your background and all that history and all that good stuff. After that, your packet then goes to a command review board in which the commanders look over the application and the packet and that stuff. If they feel comfortable with it or approve it, then the next step is you're given a conditional offer. And the reason you have to have a conditional offer, we have to have that before we can start into the psychiatric process. So with psychiatric process, you have a written psychiatric exam, and then a oral psychiatric exam, and then you have a medical screening, a drug screening. And then, once all that stuff comes back, polygraph is also involved in that. So if you pass all that stuff, then you go to a civil service board. And civil service board is made up of citizens that are appointed by the mayor and the city manager. And Lisa, who all appoints? And HR, does HR...
Now, civil services has an HR representative that helps them with that process, but they're not appointed by HR, I believe it's council.
Council appointed.
City council appoints civil service members, and those are citizens that have absolutely nothing to do with the police department whatsoever. They interview the candidate, and then they make a recommendation to myself, and then that's kind of the process for going through that. It's a pretty extensive process. We knock a lot of people out of the hiring process for various reasons, and then you start the academy.
So who conducts the psychological examinations and who evaluates those?
Yeah, Dr. Prohaska with Forensics Psychology, and she's in Kansas City.
So how often is that test reevaluated? I mean, do you know how that process is, what that test looks like in terms of how often it's redesigned or reevaluated or...
Yeah, it's a state-of-the-art test. It's updated because that's what she does, that's her profession. And so it's a current test that's reevaluated, gone over, updated quite often. One of the questions I did receive in a community meeting is how much in that psychiatric process, does it talk about bias, unbiased, known bias? And so I know there's some in there, but that's one of the things that, being in conversation...
Well, that's kind of where I'm headed. I mean, one of the things, my question was too, how much of that test looks both at racial bias and at violent tendencies? And those two things in terms of...
Yeah, well, violent tendencies is one that's very heavy, I do know that that one's very heavily involved in that process because we get a ranking, you know, high potency for violence, medium or low. One thing that I do like about Dr. Prohaska, which we switched to a year and a half ago, was that the previous doctor that we used would not give us a hire or don't hire, okay? Didn't want to make that call because, you know, say, hire with reservations. Dr. Prohaska will say, don't hire, you know, I mean, and so that's what we like about her. She gives us real answers, real-time answers, and if somebody shouldn't be a police officer, then she lets us know that.
Well, I would, I mean, I would think, and I'm willing to help if I can, that having that conversation about what's out there today now to look at racial biases before, because obviously, step one is, I mean, the individuals who create some of these problems on... these problems on the police force probably were that way before they got there. While I said, I said a few weeks ago, it is a, a small number of individuals on these forces, but their impact is, overshadows everything else that good, that officers do. But weeding them out first, so, so that would be an area I would, I would definitely like us to take a look at is how much of that can be, can be looked at on the racial bias.
Yeah, and I think that's, I think that's a very good point. I think that's one of those things we need to look at. I'm very comfortable, again, where we're at. And one of the best things about our process, you're on probation for 18 months. That is longer than a lot of places, and so we have a good amount of time to evaluate. And trust me, there are people that do not make it past that 18 months.
Right, I know that's a problem. I just have two more areas I'm curious about. So can you talk about the use, and we'll hear from the auditor later, but the use of force assessment? So when I, when I'm an officer and I fill out a report, is it a requirement to put in that report, I want to be very horror at what I'm about to say because I don't know what the heck I'm talking about, right? As opposed to arrested the individual versus the process of what occurred? Pushed, had to push them to the ground or had to push them against the cop? Is that required to be included in those reports?
Yeah, and our attorney, Mark Jones, is going to talk about that reporting process. But yes, it's, it's not just a, it's all drunk and rested the same. It is a very detailed report. You have to explain what force you used, why you used that force, what led to that force. And then in the review process, a lot of those things are checked and balanced. We have a very, very thorough use of force review now. One of the things that I, that I did when I became the chief was, I was in PSU, I was our internal affairs at one time. And one of the things that frustrated me was trying to find history on individuals was, was very core because there was not a accurate reporting system, filing system. And so one of the things that I did was I made the commitment to buy the software and the program. And so now we have a very efficient process in which the review takes place, and it's quite thorough, and it's quite accurate. And now you can run a query, you know, and get information. So those are some of the steps that we did that I decided were important because I felt they're important because I had been there, done that. I was in that situation to try to find, you know, had this officer ever done anything before or whatever? It was very hit, miss type stuff. So with this process, with this new software we have, nobody can go in and alter it except for the overseer of the program and the internal affairs investigator. So only two people have the authority or the ability, and I'm not one of them, to go in and alter or change or update or whatever.
All right, my last thing is this. You put together, and it was very helpful, a memorandum on police reform bills in Congress. You didn't make any evaluations, which is fine, but you provide us what's in the House, what's been discussed in the Senate on, on various things. I know in having spoken to you in the past and some of your officers and some of the union folks a little bit more, that there are probably some things in here that we could all agree are good, would be good policy, just as much as, as we looked at earlier, the prohibited use of force that we already have. My request, I guess, or goal, or if we could get this done, I guess, in the next few weeks or so or month, would be to take all the things we agree, and they've heard me say this, if it's good policy today, I see no reason why it's not good law tomorrow. And you're not going to be chief forever, right? I mean, that's just the reality.
Right.
And so it's good, I think, sometimes when you have good policies in place, knowing that the people are going to change, to put those into some sort of law, the stuff we can agree on, so moving forward, whoever comes next knows what is and isn't allowed.
Right.
So I guess my request would be if we could get together and put something together and work with the officers and the union and say, these are the things we can start with that we all agree can, are currently prohibited, should be prohibited, let's get those into law first and then use those as our springboard to have, continue to have other conversations about things maybe we agree on, maybe we don't, but we can go from there. And as we'll talk about later, I've tried to start that as, because I'm the one who brought the no-knock warrant policy forward. So that would be my, my ask this evening, if we could do that and codify those into law as opposed to just policy that could be changed by the next chief.
Yeah, you're right. And I, one of the things that I'm, again, very proud of is, even as you know, the House is more liberal and they got different things, but I can tell you, in the House bills, we, we do all that stuff already. Whatever they don't want you to do, we don't do it, and stuff they want you to do, we do do. The Senate bill is interesting because a lot of it's just wrapped around funding and the aspect that, well, if you don't do this, then you don't get funding. One thing I can tell you is the FBI does have a national registry in which agencies are to report use of forces across the nation. Less than 40% of the agencies report. I can probably say that we do report. We've reported ours for the last two years. So we're, we're doing that already. And so again, there's, there's a lot of good things going on at the Peak Police Department. And a lot of those things have come from conversations with, with community members and meeting with community members. And so again, when I talk about the fabric at the PICA is quite different than a lot of other places, we, we have that. You know, I, I talk, I talk to a wide variety of people, I get input, and, you know, if I can make, make the PICA a better place, that's my job. Safer community for everyone.
Thank you. That's all I had.
I will add a few things really quick. Chief, one of the resources that we have as available to do our racial bias, if you go to IAT questionnaire, I think it is, it's a Harvard-free implicit bias survey that anybody can take. But here's what I'm going to tell everybody. After doing a lot of research on the study of implicit bias, there's two things that ring through. Every single one of us has biases. A bias is nothing but something that has been ingrained into our subconscious. And typically, one of the biggest issues that we have when we're addressing biases in individuals is that people are very resistant to talk about their biases because typically, you're not so much arguing with something that a person considers right or wrong, you're arguing with a legacy of family members that have been given to you all these beliefs that you hold to be true. And because they have been passed on generation to generation to generation, people have a really hard time understanding that there may be something that is not accurate within that bias. So there is no cure for biases. And the only thing that has been proven scientifically to eliminate a bias is to marry into a person that has a very different cultural background than yours. And then by that exercise of cohabitation with somebody and understanding and being able to see that human as a whole human, then your biases end up disappearing. What is important, and I'm saying this because I can tell you that there is no such thing as implicit bias training, and there is no cure for bias. What is possible and what we should all aim for is to understand by having these conversations that we're having right now, the understanding of where those biases come from and acknowledge that you have them and be honest with yourself that you have them because once you identify and you check yourself on those biases, which is extremely important. So I, I know that we're talking about all of this, and it's important for our public to understand these things. And it's great that we're having this conversation, but I also want to make sure that we are fair and that we're very transparent about those terms that we're throwing around. I know that Councilwoman Nager has a question, and so does Councilwoman Padilla. Councilwoman Nager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Chief, for discussing all of this with us and making sure that we're really getting this out for the public to understand and to grasp. As far as the AICAMW objectives, how many of those do we currently comply with? Because if you go to the website, you can't roll up to being Kansas. So for our public, what do we comply with and what are we working on?
Well, the, we comply with all of them. The biggest question is the, given a warning before you shoot. Deadly force can only be used in certain situations. And so in those situations, most of the time, it's not one of the things where you have the opportunity to warn somebody before you're going to shoot. So that's one that's, you know, I guess you would say if there's one that we don't really, but we don't shoot very often, okay? Deadly force, like I said, is very strict in when you can use it, okay? And so when, when those situations arise, they're usually the officers in a situation where that opportunity doesn't lend itself. So all the others, we do. We don't, we don't shoot at moving cars, we, you know, so we, we can, like I said, if you want to say there's one we probably don't comply with, that would, I guess that would be the one.
Okay. And then you were talking about with CAPOS.
The what?
Reporting bad actors, is what I understood from that. That's something that would be taken on at the state legislative level?
The CPOS?
Yes.
Yes. CPOS, yeah, CPOS is appointed by the legislature and approved by the mayor, or by the governor. And that is an entity that is made up of representatives from different law enforcement agencies and civilians across the state of Kansas. And they review all certificates that are sent to them. And by, when I say review certificates, they review whatever information is sent to them, and then they make a determination on whether that certificate should be pulled or not. And there's a quite extensive appeal process in that as well, though. So if they make the determination, they're going to uphold the, pull in another certificate, then the officer then can have a review made up of three of the panelists. Then if they agree to uphold the pulling of the certificate, then they have the opportunity to present their case to a judge, and then the judge can make that, makes that final determination. So it is kind of a lengthy process, but...
Okay. And then I also just wanted to go ahead and draw to the public's attention, this is not so much the question, but just presenting information to the public, making sure that we're talking about ways that citizens can get involved and that, what I found really interesting in some of your responses was talking about demilitarizing the police, which I think is very important because you're here to serve and protect the community, you're not here to fight against us, and we're not here to fight against you. So for citizens, if you're looking to get involved, there's the Citizens Academy, I'm sorry. I'm going to go pay the 501 student who mows my lawn, and I'll be right back.
I will move on to Councilwoman Padilla with his question. Do that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Chief, for your presentation. I might follow up on something that Councilman Duncan brought up, and I ask it in the way of a question, probably from the city manager, the chief, and maybe Jackie Russell. I've had the opportunity to be on the police side when those police applicant candidates come through and look at their resumes and look at their applications and sit there and dig through to try to see those things that I think are going to be outstanding for a new officer, or look for those telltale signs that you kind of get a gut reaction on, that you want to follow up on, that you want to get a little more information on before you move somebody through the process. And I remember looking at those as a police officer. I also remember looking at those as a member of the Civil Service Commission. And in my opinion, such as it is, I do feel that some of those questions need to be looked at very seriously because oftentimes what you get is a canned answer from an applicant who gives you the answer that they're pretty sure you want to hear so that they can move forward in, in the process. And I think a regular review of those questions so that there are a bit more probing to get honest answers about biases and so forth, those kinds of situational things where someone might act in a certain way. But I would ask and suggest that while we're looking at the police policies, that we look at the very beginning, at the front end of this, who comes into that interview? How did they get there? Are those questions that we're using as part of that review with the Civil Service? Because that's an opportunity for civilians to give their input right off the bat on whether or not a candidate is suitable to move forward in a program. So I don't know how long those questions have been in place. I know since I did it, I always had some struggle with some of the questions because they just did not seem to be probing enough into someone's character to really give you an idea of whether or not this is a good candidate to move forward. So my question would be if we could at least look at those and include them in these conversations about how we're improving the entire process and not just at the police department, but also at human resources, so that we're doing the right thing there as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, one thing I forgot to mention when Councilman Duncan asked about the process, one, one thing I did leave out, there is a commander's oral interview that's in that process as well, about halfway in between. And one of the things that we did, we, we will have a class in October, an academy class, and so we're going through that hiring process. But the last oral interviews that we did at the, at the commander level, Sergeant Ruben Salamanca, as I told you, you know, teaches and is our lead instructor in the academy and also teaches the history, he came to me and asked if he could change up the questions to be more appropriate for what's going on currently in our times. You know, we used to ask a question like, if you ask for the day off to go to a ballgame and somebody else asks for the day off, the other one didn't get it, and you show up and you're both at the ballgame, and so what do you do? So that was one of those, you know, ethical dilemma questions. One of the things now we ask questions more pertaining to currently what's going on, how do you feel about what's happened nationally? What's your view on what's happening nationally? And that's what that, that part is, Councilwoman Padilla, is try to draw those type of things out early on in the process. So, but yeah, the civil service of questions are something that probably need to be updated.
Councilwoman Nager. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. And thank you very much for everyone allowing me to go ahead and patronize that student. So talking about what citizens can do to make sure that you're involved with our community on policing and our police department in general. There's the Citizens Academy, which is an annual program, and you get to see what the police department does. There's also the Volunteers in Police Service. I know that whenever I did, whenever we were able to socially gather last year and I was campaigning, I was able to go and participate in Ice Cream with a Cop, and there were some of those volunteers who were there, and they were very knowledgeable. They informed me not only in the program of what the police department was doing around town and making sure that they were keeping our citizens safe and allowing us to have fun activities, things like Fiesta and downtown parades, because they were there, making sure we were safe and volunteering in that capacity. There's a strengthening police and community partnership, something that we came around in 2018 and has become more of a discussion as of late. I think that there are still spots available on that panel, and it's a citizens panel, to go ahead and make sure that we are partnering with the, our lead officers. There's the Strategic Leadership Academy, which is led by Kane Davis, and the purpose is to foster communication and understanding between the police department and the community. You can see that a lot of these things, a lot of these activities are repetitive, and it's because we're all reached in different ways. So there are a wide variety of ways to get involved. There's also the Safe Streets Coalition, which if you're a part of a neighborhood association or you're looking to get something started in your neighborhood, would be a good resource. And there's the Human Relations Commission, which we just appointed two commissioners to today. And so it's good to make sure that you're a part and really using those resources that are already established in the community, as well as thinking of new ways to engage people who are not getting reached by these programs specifically. I also thought it was important that we went ahead and talked about the ways that we are, the ways that the department is demilitarizing the police, because I think that... the ways that the department is demilitarizing the police, because I think that, like you were talking about, the school resource officers coming to school and playing clothes, I know that whenever I go to my job, now I look more like Darth Vader rather than your neighborhood dentist, but due to COVID. But making sure that we're coming across as more leaders in the community, rather than something to be feared, or something to avoid, being in the soft uniforms, transitioning all employees from the black outer vest body armors to blue ones, moving away from that kind of black ops military look. The K-9 unit is transitioning from the black uniforms to the blue uniforms, in that the response team is going from green fatigues to blue ones, that our police department doesn't have any military vehicles or equipment, and that in years past, there were some rifles that were given from the Air Force as surplus, and that's something that you're going through the process of returning those rifles. So making sure that this is a department that is supporting the community, rather than kind of just trying to keep a lid on turmoil, because that's not what we're looking at. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share those things in a public forum, and that's all I have.
And on the Citizen Academy, one of the things that I started about a year ago was, the Citizen Academy used to always be done at the police department. And so what we started doing is looking at what classes can be taken out into the community. And so now we go like to High Crest and Avondale East and do classes over there, as well as Oakland Community Center. And the reason behind that was, believe it or not, we have a lot of individuals in our community that have never been to portions of the city of Topeka, and that's very unfortunate. But it's also a reality in the aspect that, when you look at the High Crest community, if you live somewhere outside of that, there's really nothing, there's not a reason for you to go there, because it's residential, you know. And so we have a lot of individuals that have never been to those parts of our community. And so taking the Citizen Academy out into the community, we're exposing a lot of our students, or those older people that want to become volunteers in policing, or want to go to the Citizen Academy, to experiencing parts of the city that they've never been to before.
I just had, thank you, Mayor, I just had one question about demilitarization, and I, you know, I think that there was a lot of good information that you gave as chief on that. We still have a SWAT team, is that correct?
We have a response team. And response team goes to, SWAT team is a tactical unit that only does tactical type things. Response unit is, does more than that.
Okay, so we don't have a SWAT team?
Well, yes and no. We have a response team that is trained in weapons tactics and all that other stuff, but they're also utilized for a lot of different other activities.
So is there a vehicle that comes with that, like a SWAT-type vehicle, response team vehicle?
We have one vehicle that's called, it's a armored rescue vehicle, and that is a Homeland Security Resource, that's where the whole northeast Kansas. And so the purpose of that unit is an armored vehicle in the aspect that if there's a situation where somebody has to be extracted out of a dangerous situation, that that vehicle can be used to do so.
And do you know, just right off the top of your head, because I don't have it in front of me, how much money out of your budget goes towards that SWAT slash response team?
Off the top of my head, I do not, but that is a lined item budget number, and so that would be very easy to obtain.
Okay. I don't think I got that line item that I was looking for from the city manager, but I will say that the history of SWAT is very militarized. It was born from, you know, the civil rights movement, the riots in Watts in Los Angeles, and SWAT-type tactics were also used against the United Farm Workers. Now, if there's something that's just like, what are you doing with farm workers and SWAT-type tactics? I just don't know. I would like to see in the future, and I'll email you this on chief, how often that response team is utilized, obviously the dollar amount, because we have been getting calls as well for defunding the police, and that means 100 different things to 100 different people. But most people, what it means is it means taking some of the funds from the police and giving it to social services that we know continue to lose funding, or doing things that TPD and police should not be required to do, mental health services, issues with homelessness, et cetera. So I just wanted to throw that out, because to me, SWAT still smacks, even though you're saying it's response teams, SWAT still smacks of militarization, and so I'll just be sending you a follow-up email. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Additional comments on the use of force policies? Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two things. I first want to thank the chief, I did send some questions, and I think it was helpful, but between all of us, there, I referred a lot of people to watch tonight, too, and I wanted to make sure we at least got some of those issues out. I think we've covered most of them, so I'll just, from my point of view, ask you to talk about just two, two more for everyone that's here. One is, in terms of profiling, can you talk a little bit about the training and the policies on how an officer is trained to decide who to stop and who not to stop?
Well, profiling is illegal, as we know, and I assume you're talking about racial profiling?
I am.
Okay. That is illegal. That is a constitutional rights violation, in which that would refer back to Councilwoman Valdivia Alcila's question about termination and stuff like that, if it is illegal. How people make a determination on how to stop is, should be based upon probable cause and criminal activity in traffic violations and things like that. So as, yeah, you cannot stop somebody purely based upon their sexual orientation, religious belief, gender, or their race. And so that is illegal. So the training that they receive is, how do you properly and how do you legally stop somebody, and for, what are you stopping them for? And so those are the things, so when you're talking about, you know, bias-based policing is a lot of the things that filters into that. The big thing is, as the mayor said, everybody has biases, it's what you do with that bias. If you act on that bias, then it becomes illegal, and then you run into the racial profiling. And the reason that we focus so much on bias-based policing and culture competency is that racial profiling is extremely hard to prove. Unless somebody says, the reason I did it was because of this, it's very hard to prove. And so that's why we focus and gear so much towards bias-based policing, working on getting those biases out, talking about those biases, why, you know, why might you feel that way? And then culture competency is understanding the public in which we serve, and so we spend a lot of time on that.
Thank you. There might still be some more conversation in terms of, okay, if the word is that it was a black guy who was about 5'9", and then the next African-American male that the person sees, they stop and kind of grill. I think some of us anyway, maybe many of us have heard reports of that kind of thing happening, even here in Topeka, or just pulling somebody over because you're looking in general, and so.
And even the courts are looking at that. And so one of the things that we have to work on and educate our officers on is report writing as well. You know, I saw a black male or Hispanic male in the middle of the roadway. Well, you saw an individual in the middle of the roadway. That's what brought your attention, or should have brought your attention to it. Somebody was in the middle of the roadway, should have nothing to do with the race. And so it's educating the officers and getting them to understand that you stopped the person because they're in the middle of the roadway, and then you go.
Thank you. The other thing I wanted to ask you to talk a little bit more about, and Councilwoman Valdivia Alcila touched on it, we've gotten a fair amount of correspondence about defund the police, and she's right, people have a variety of interpretations of that, or, and I've asked a number of people, I've said, what do you really mean by that? And they have come back, and many of them have come back and talked about it a little bit more. But in particular, the theme through that is using persons other than the police to do things, as well as the kind of bringing it down, bringing just that appearance. We've spent a lot of time, or our department has, on trying to do police-community interaction, and you talked about it with the schools, in terms of just having people be more comfortable with the police and have a relationship and so on. But could you talk a little bit, we really have quite a history of partnering or using partner agencies on the front lines for things like homelessness, for mental health, and could you just talk about those partnerships that people are looking for a little bit?
Yeah, we have a lot of programs, I say a lot, for us, there are a lot, several programs. We have a homeless outreach team, which is comprised of a partnership between the Rescue Mission, Vallejo, and the police department, and it's also received some assistance from other organizations, as you know, as well as Stormont Valley Foundation. And the whole purpose of that is engaging the unsheltered population and try to get them to services and resources that they need. So that's one that we have. We have our CIT program, which all of our officers now are changed in crisis intervention training, which is how to deal with people who are in a behavioral health crisis. When you go through the academy, it's part of the basic academy. But then we also have what's called the Behavioral Health Unit, which are special officers that specifically deal with individuals who are in a behavioral health crisis, and they work hand-in-hand with a crisis responder from Vallejo that works out of the Law Enforcement Center. We provide that individual with the radio and the car, and so while the officers may respond to the call initially, they can call for that unit to come out, and that call is usually handed off to them, and then that person is diverted from the criminal justice system and go into jail to services within the community. So that's another one of those. So we have, we have those. And then with the volunteer and policing, the Councilwoman Nager talked about, that is a group of individuals, citizens, who do a lot of functions, as you were talking about, officers responding to not being armed. And so we get a lot of abandoned vehicle calls, cars, calls, and so this group of individuals, they'll go out, they'll check the vehicle, and mark it if it needs towed or whatever. We have our citizen ID ship program, which we now provide ID cards to unsheltered individuals or anybody who needs an ID card. And that's, that's something that, we're probably about the only one in the country that does that, but what it allows individuals to do, it gives them an ID, which our partners here, all of our business partners and stuff in Topeka accept. And so some of these individuals have access to checks and stuff like that, but not having an ID, they can't cash it. So that's a program that we started here within the last year or so, and that's, then we have an officer, Sergeant Clam, who works with that program, who's established a partnership with the state of Kansas, and working on getting, if they don't have a state ID card, that once they get that City of Topeka ID card, then the process can begin, and walks them through it, and helps them through that process of getting a permit, state ID. But we have received calls as far as California and Florida from law enforcement agencies who have stopped an unsheltered person, and they have their Kansas-topeka police department ID card, and it says, call for verification on there, and we verify that, yeah, that is so-and-so, and that's a valid city ID card.
If you could kind of wrap that up again, our department has chosen to try and get police-community relationships, including with youth. I'm not quite, I haven't heard much from the defund the police folks about wanting the police to get out of those, but you've affirmatively done a lot of programs with kids as well.
Yeah, we have a lot of programs for kids, and, you know, we have the Explorers Program. Again, we're in the schools, we do summer camps, we have Pathfinders, so we have a lot of youth programs, you know, and when we talk about defunding the police, one thing I could say about the Topeka Police Department, we divert a lot of those funds to those type of activities, because we feel they're very beneficial and will help make Topeka a better place. And so when you talk about funding, you know, if you're transferring funds to another civic organization to do the same function or whatever, you know, I don't know if that's necessarily, I don't consider that defunding the police, because somebody's got to do that activity. The thing that you run into when you talk about the conversation to defunding the police is, a lot of the activities that we do, we do because they were formed out of necessity. Nobody else in the community was doing them. And so we felt like the Behavioral Health Unit, the homeless outreach team, getting into those areas, were not being fulfilled, but it was a service that we saw from our officers, and requested from our officers, that something needed to be done. And so that Behavioral Health Unit's a primary example. That is something that we fund with our own dollars, that we, we put the money there to make sure it happens. In the 21 budget, it's, you know, it's not, a lot of it's not out yet, but, you know, those are things that I've made the commitment and increased some funds to some of those areas. But those are, you know, dollars that, you know, were taken from whatever police service to make sure that the community services met. And when you talk about these behavioral health crises and stuff, we're the ones that are out there at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning. If there was an organization that could meet that need, we would be more than happy to have them be present. But when we talk about the crisis responder, in our partnership with Vallejo right now, because of budgetary issues, we're going to be losing the third shift crisis responder, and we've already lost it. And that was a resource to those officers and to the community out there in those times, that that person could be called to take over a suicide call, or a mental health call, or substance abuse call. And so those are things, again, you know, on 21 budget, from what I'm hearing from my officers and stuff, that commitment's got to be there. So when you see the budget, we'll talk more about that, but those are, those are things that we were doing far in advance. Defunding the police was not even a conversation. These are commitments that we have made at the police department to the community of Topeka for many years, but a lot of them here within the last two or three years. And, you know, we hope to continue that.
Thank you. And as my colleagues did, I would encourage people, and I've done this in the emails, if there are questions, it's complex, and I think that, and there's always room for improvement, and the feedback's really, really important. So if people do have some thoughts, to be as specific as you can, and if you have questions and want to challenge the budget or whatever, probably through any of us, we're willing to kind of ask those questions with you or for you, and figure out, you know, if you think the youth programs would be better off done just by third-party agencies rather than with the police, for instance, then that's something, that's a conversation we ought to have. They've done a good job, and Worked OK Kids, and Police Athletic League, and now starting boxing, for instance. Yes or no? What do people think? Thank you, chief. You've done a good job. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, I just got a question from a constituent. She was asking if potential candidates to become officers are assigned to background officers, it seems red flags and markers of social views would be discovered in the extensive background checks. How thorough are they in looking for like racist, or sexist, or discriminatory posts, or other indicators where those would be red flags, and those would potentially cost a candidate their opportunity to become an officer?
Yeah, one of the things in the background process, you have to give us access to your Facebook accounts and stuff like that, so we can check those type of things. So that's part of that hiring process, so I feel we do a pretty good job of screening that. But with that being said, if you're going through the process, and you know that's part of the process, then you might clean that up. So that's why the background is so thorough, that's why we go out and we talk to all these individuals, because at some point, as you know, when you fill out an application, you're going to put down people that hopefully will say good things about you. And so part of the background officer's process is that when you're talking to people, you ask them, well, is there anybody else that might know them or whatever? And so the hopes are, you get maybe two, three people down the line, that you might get a more accurate portrayal of what that person might be like.
So kind of to what Councilman Padilla was saying earlier, instead of just getting the answers or getting the results that the candidate thinks- the answers or getting the results that the candidate thinks that they need to present, you're looking for those underlying patterns and making sure, like you were saying, going through their kind of social strata to make sure that those are not underlying patterns?
Yeah, we used to contract out background services to individuals, and we have stopped that now. I now use our detectives and stuff like that to do those backgrounds. And so it pulls them away from their duty assignment while they're doing backgrounds, but I feel we get a much more accurate and thorough background that way.
Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to ask Chief any questions or make any final statements on this issue? I just want to say thank you to all of these council members and to Chief for being courageous and being able to have these open, transparent, important conversations. I do want to respond, somebody asked, where do you find the policies? If you go to the City of Topeka Police, Topeka Police Department, on the side, Department Information, you're going to see a link that says "Topeka Police Policies." And that is where you'll be able to find all of this information that has been made available for individuals who want to have access to the information that we have been talking about, so that you could vet it yourself and continue this important conversation in our community. Councilwoman Duncan, I want to make sure that I give you credit for bringing up the chokehold policies and everything that led us to this discussion as well. Also, I think that at this point in time, if there's no additional comments, the next thing is the independent police auditor report, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight also, we wanted to cover our independent police auditor, a position that's been in place for a little while now. And so it was an opportunity to go through and explain some of the issues and things that he's seen and explain what his position and role is. So Ed, go ahead.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening. So I've been the independent police auditor now for about nine months. And as I, hopefully everybody got the little outline that I turned in for your review. But some of my responsibilities include to serve as an alternative forum where citizens feel comfortable coming to if they have a complaint against the police department, and they don't want to go to someone within the chain of command. To monitor ongoing investigations that are necessary, to do my own investigations. For example, if a citizen comes in, they can come directly to my office, they can call my office, they can email me, I have the complaint form online and submit a complaint. So far, I've been successful in responding to reviewing, doing the research, and responding to citizen complaints within 24 hours of that complaint being filed with my office. And obviously, to do an independent civilian oversight to use of force incidents and to conduct outreach and public awareness of the checks and balances that exist in the civilian oversight of TPD. So as far as the, what triggers a use of force review is, in essence, any force that is used by a police officer other than verbal commands. So it could be something as, for example, as use of a hand strike or compliance techniques, and all the way, obviously, to lethal force. It could be a canine bite, any type of force that is used by law enforcement will initiate or trigger a use of force review. On the reference to the process, the officers that are involved in the use of force know to immediately contact their commander, or correction, their supervisor. Normally, as a sergeant, they'll come out to the scene, and the officers will explain to the sergeant what happened, what the use of force was, and the sergeant will receive that information, take appropriate notes, and then they go and ask and speak to the person who was apprehended and ask them, they read them an administrative review, explain to them that what they're doing is an administrative review, that it's not part of the criminal investigation, that these are questions solely about the use of force. Then they conduct, whenever possible, they conduct the interview of the person, saying what happened from your perspective, what do you think the officers were doing, did you hear them tell you to stop, can you see that they're wearing police uniforms, do you think they used the appropriate amount of force? As I reviewed hundreds of videos, I was surprised at how many people would respond, yeah, they did what they had to do, or yes, they used the right amount of force, or something to that effect, and acknowledgement that what the officer was doing met their personal criteria, even as the person being apprehended. So once that information is retrieved by the sergeant, the blue team is the software that is used, case is initiated by the sergeant. And then that goes all the way up to the chain of command, to the lieutenant, which is the watch commander, they review it, and they indicate whether or not there's any information missing, if they see any issues, and then it goes, continues on to the captain, major, all the way to the deputy chief of the police department. Then the use of force board gets together, they review it once again, look at everything from different angles, and then after that review is complete, it goes to my office. Now let me backtrack a little bit. Every week, I receive a list of the new use of force cases that are coming down the pipe that are recent, as it enters the blue team system. So after the use of force board reviews it, then it comes as a completed package with all the attachments to my office. As I review it from a civilian perspective, independent perspective, I look at all the angles, not only the use of force, I look for collateral issues, I look for any tactics, any, anything that occurs that may bring a question. Just as an example, some months ago, there were some issues with handcuffing, where within a matter of 30 days, three different individuals got slipped out of their handcuffs. So I went to the academy, and I spoke to the folks at the academy, and I was able to observe two days of handcuffing techniques at the academy to see what was going on there. And also, I spoke to the chief about that situation as well. So up to date, I have reviewed approximately 104 cases, 36 of those cases have fallen to one or more categories. And I listed the categories there for the council, but they include show of force, pepper or OC spray, taser or ECD, physical use of force, firearms discharge, and less than lethal cases. I've also done 13 administrative investigative reviews, three audit reviews, 11 citizen complaints, eight review of civilian complaints submitted to PSU, and I've attended 14 NIA or Neighborhood Association meetings before the COVID hit. I also would like to note that whenever there's lethal use for, lethal, correction, lethal force used, as part of the process, it gets assigned to an external investigating unit. It could be Kansas City Police, it could be Lawrence PD, but it's investigated by an external police unit in order to show additional transparency in the process. Is there any questions from council?
Question, Councilwoman Valdiviata.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Collyesso, I just want to clarify, because I was furiously writing notes, is, am I to understand that you, as the independent police auditor, you are looking at an investigation done by someone else? You don't actually conduct the investigation?
It depends. If it's a use of force, normally those come through a process, as I just indicated, where the, it's reviewed at different levels. And then after it's reviewed, then it comes to my desk for a final independent review. If there is an investigation done, let's say, for example, a person calls PSU or IA, and they file a complaint with IA, they do their investigation, and then it gets passed to my office for review of that investigation. During this whole process, I have the ability, if I have any questions or concerns, I have the ability to seek out additional information, whether it be videos, whether it be statements, whether it be reports, if I have any questions. I don't, I'm not, I'm not necessarily, I don't have to maintain myself within the confines of what is offered to me.
Okay, so that's a no. Like, when you have somebody call your office about a complaint, right, say they got your, they found your card somewhere, and they call you and say, Mr. Collyesso, I, something happened, and I want to file a complaint against a police officer because there was excessive force used, and that paperwork gets filled out, do you investigate it, or are you looking at someone else's investigation, where then upon you render a decision?
Absence interviewing law enforcement officers, I conduct the investigation if the complaint is brought to my office. I very recently had a gentleman who came to my office and in person and filed a complaint with me, and I was able to review videos, review the police reports of that case, and I was able to have an answer to him and a finalized report to him that same day.
Okay, and so if they come into your office, you can review them, but you don't actually review any Topeka Police persons that are having a complaint lodged against them? You don't do any of that? Someone else, sergeant, does that, and then it goes down this chain, correct?
I'm sorry, can you repeat your question?
Do you do the, do you ask questions of the person, the policeman or woman that a complaint has been lodged against? Do you interview them, or does someone else interview them, like the sergeant that you were referring to?
Sure. If I could not get the information from, whether it be from body-worn camera videos or from police reports, and for whatever reason it required an interview of a police officer, that would be done by the professional standards unit.
Okay, so you do not interview them?
That's correct.
Done by someone else?
Yeah.
And then what they glean on their questions is then sent to you after it's gone through all of this process, and then based on interviews done by someone else and information that you do have access to, then you base your decision on that, correct?
That is correct, and I would have access to the audio interview and the specific interview with that officer within the PSU.
Okay, thank you. How soon is, well, how long does it usually take to wrap up a case, just average?
It really, there is really no average, what I've seen so far in the nine months that I've been here, it varies. It could be as little as two weeks, a lot of it depends on accessibility of the individuals involved, the chain of command, and also the, whenever the use of force board meets. So it varies.
What's the longest an investigation has taken?
I think the longest was the most recent police-involved shooting. It went to an external agency, and it took probably over 30 days for it to get to my desk.
Okay, thank you. Are you ever denied, have you ever been denied any evidence that you have inquired?
No, ma'am.
Or by TPDs?
No.
Okay. Whether, when a case comes through on a particular officer, and it sounds like everything that you have found, all of these officers have acted appropriately, but let's just say you have the case and you have the file there, and no wrongdoing is found, what happens to that file? Does it stay separate from their HR file? Do you just file it in your little file cabinet in your office, or where does that go?
So unless there's some concern, I do not keep, everything's done electronically. So those files are kept with the PSU. However, there'll be an annotation on there that I've reviewed the file as the independent police auditor.
What is PSU?
The Professional Standards Unit, IA.
Okay. But you don't know whether it goes actually into, even if they are found, nothing was done wrong, you don't know if it goes into their HR file?
I believe perhaps the chief could answer that better than I could.
Yeah, PSU files are separate from human resources files. And when we talk about files, they're electronic, there's no, they're not paper files, that's part of that, that blue team system. And one of the other important things to keep in mind is that even though there may not be anything, policy violation with the use of force, there are other, we don't just look at the use of force, we look at what led up to it and what took place during it. And so a lot of times, or not a lot of times, several times, there is discipline or corrective action that is rendered, that is not on the use of force, but they violated a different policy or another policy leading up to it or what have.
And is that put in their HR database?
That corrective action is sent to HR, has to by policy, and then corrective actions like that stay in their file at HR, and then for purposes of the police department, for contract reasons, like after two years, it comes out of their file for, like if they want to apply for promotions or a specialty unit or something like that.
Okay, thank you. Back to Mr. Collyesso, with the two quarters that we're looking at, that were provided, I know that this is a relatively new department, but is it usual? Hopefully, you've seen other IPA offices across the country, or maybe talked with them. Is it usual to have this number of complaints over two-quarter period with none rising to the level of referral to the city manager?
I do not know the answer to that. I can certainly look into that and ask. I've been in contact with several different IPAs throughout the country, and I can certainly look into that. I think that if I were to speculate, that it is not unusual to have, say, two quarters without any negative findings.
Okay. Yeah, if we could find out how that compares with other IPAs across the country, or similar, actually with similar populations, that would be great. And also, what happens when something is referred on to the city manager? If it would be, what's the protocol if it rises to that level?
Sure. So if something rises to the level of reporting to the city manager, then I would give him all the information I have available on that case, I would brief him orally on that case and in writing, and then he would take it from there.
Okay. And then, obviously, the city manager has protocol, I'm assuming from that point. And how is the FOP involved in all of these investigations as well?
It's my understanding that whenever an officer has an in-person interview with PSU, they have the right to have an FOP representative there with them.
Okay, okay, thank you. I really thank you for taking the time to answer the questions. I will say, I just don't think that there is, from what I've heard from constituents, it's, to me, it's never a good look when we investigate ourselves. I mean, it's just not, whatever, whatever we want to call ourselves, independent auditors, you know, I don't know that much about internal affairs, but my very strong suggestion as we move along in these weeks of conversations is going to be starting to look at the process of a citizen review panel. I've been reading a lot about it, I know that there's pros and there's cons involved in it, but I think that we have to do something in addition to the IPA, something that will not stand as much as possible, will not stand a chance of being co-opted, that's no slam towards anybody, I'm just saying that it will remain neutral and just as oriented as much as possible. And so I will continue to move forward with that in the near future. And so I will continue to move forward with that in the near future. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Additional questions for Mr. Collyesso?
Yes, sorry.
Councilman Duncan?
Have you made any disciplinary recommendations or corrective action recommendations to the chief in any of these? I know they didn't rise to the level of city manager, but have you made any recommendations to the chief?
I spoke into the chief about some of my findings. I did not make recommendations as it relates to any kind of what should occur that's within his realm of responsibilities.
So if you find out, and this hypothetical I guess, but which I know is dangerous, right? But I mean, so once you've made that recommendation, do you then follow up at all with what corrective action was taken? Or even verify, in other words, if you see a file and think to yourself, something needs to happen here, I, I determine that there needs to be corrective action of some kind. If you're not technically making that recommendation to the chief, I assume you're at least saying, well, here's what I would maybe do, or something needs to happen here, I guess is what you're telling us, you say. Do you do any follow-up on those cases to see the corrective action was or was not taken?
Again, I, I feel that perhaps I will be crossing into his realm of responsibility. I believe my job is to, to identify the issue and submit that, and make that, give that to his attention for his, for his review and it will be within his purview to then take whatever appropriate actions he deems necessary.
So what is your, so then after you review that, then I'm confused, so then after you review that, what do, I mean, if you see something that you think needs corrected, what do you say then? Nothing? You just pass it on and say, well, I saw something here? I mean, I'm not trying to be, but I'm, I'm very confused. What then is it that you are issuing to the chief on your findings to, I mean, with all due respect, I felt part of your position would be to at least recommend to the chief, I saw this, my suggestion might be this, whether you do that or not, as you said, may be the chief, but if that's not happening, then what's happening if you do see something that throws up a red flag for you?
Sure. So again, if, let's say I, I note something that throws up a red flag, I, I report that to the chief, whether, it could be via email, it could be in person or both. And I say, chief, I'm, I'm concerned about this. He'll receive it and he may respond back, say, all right, thanks, we're, we're looking into this. Then I start looking for patterns. If I see that occurring again and I talk to the chief and I don't feel anything's being done, then I can take it to the city manager.
So in terms of that, and then you've only been here nine months, have you, have, do you, have you done any follow-up? I mean, there may be two out of this 104, so I'm not suggesting it's all 104. I want to be clear on that. I mean, have you done any follow-up with the chief just to say, hey, curious, we, I sent that recommendation, I was curious, was any corrective action taken?
I have.
Okay. And so far, have you been satisfied that in all of those cases corrective action was taken?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Duncan, that's part of the reason he also shares that information with me and I follow up with chief as his supervisor to ensure that he's taking corrective action in those particular situations. I look at it as Colazo is providing me the information of where there may be an issue and then I feel it's my responsibility to follow up with the chief, make sure that he's making the corrective action versus it being really Ed's responsibility.
Yeah, and I would just say, I think that layer is important because from my perspective, the whole purpose of having something we're calling independent auditor isn't just to pass that back, with all due respect to the department, to the same department that sent it on and said, if we don't have a layer there that actually says there was actual follow-up, corrective action was taken and something was actually done about it. Otherwise, we're just re-reviewing policies and really not solving any of the problems we're trying to address in the first place.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alta, to be followed by Councilwoman Ortiz. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, obviously I'm confused when she asked that question, Spencer, Council, Councilperson Duncan, because I thought that, Mr. Collyesso, you told me that all of these cases, there was no findings of, of cause or, what's the right verbiage? None of the cases rose to the level to refer to the city manager. The use of force with the officers was appropriate.
That's correct.
And in accordance with the Topeka Police Department policy, but now we're talking about, you have brought something up to the chief?
Yes, ma'am. It, it, but it wasn't in reference to use of force, there were some other collateral issues that I identified that I brought to the chief of police.
So do you have the authority then, if there are collateral issues that you're looking at, that you have concerns with, to file something on your own or to put that through internal affairs if there's still one on the Topeka PD? I'm, I just don't understand. That, that seems to me like an extraordinarily, an extraordinarily, an extraordinary amount of tunnel vision for the initial complaint, but then if you're seeing some stuff happen here and here and here that's sending up some warning flags or you have concerns about them, why isn't there any type of complaint being brought by your office and either communicated with the chief and the city manager and whoever, instead of just saying, okay, I'm just going to look at this one, we'll think, nope, nothing's wrong, but I have concerns here and here and here? I mean, why, why would there not be additional complaints put forward by you?
If I'm understanding your question or comment correctly, because these are, it could be a training issue, it could be something not, it's not directly relevant to the, or pertain to the use of force, it's just different things that I see that I bring, I say, I may write an email or I might visit the chief and I say, chief, there, I, I just noted this, I just wanted to bring this to your attention. And, and then he'll look at it from there. And then if additional training is necessary or if there's something in the protocol or a policy that needs to be adjusted or looked at, then he and the city manager will look at that. And I think the chief has a comment on this as well.
So as I pointed out, there's cursory issues that take place and I think it'd be appropriate that our, our legal advisor, Mark Jones, talk about the review process because that's very important. What I can tell you is we had an issue that happened in the first quarter that was dispensed of in the second quarter. It comes up through a use of force because that's how it's documented. But at the end of the day, the employee was terminated, two supervisors were written up and three commanders were suspended for a day without pay. Not because of the use of force, but because of other cursory issues that took place. And that's accountability that, that we have. The use of force, when it's applied, 99% of the time is appropriate, but it's all the things that lead up to it, what got us there, why was that utilized? And so that's a case there. If there's an issue because of our reporting process and our documenting and tracking process, we usually catch it long before it gets to Mr. Colazo's desk. And so I think it'd be appropriate to have Mark Jones, our legal advisor, speak to that process.
Somebody's coming in?
Where'd you like me? Thanks. First thing is I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to meet you all and talk to you. I've been here four months and there's no pressure, I'm just here with my two bosses. But thank you for letting me talk about the use of force. I've been a lawyer 38 years, I've been a defense attorney, I've been a prosecutor, I've been a county counselor. I have been appointed as a, as a special public defender on a variety of cases over my time. Let me talk a little bit about the use of force because it's unique. I've been around a long time, I've seen lots of use of force policies. This is an incredibly detailed, incredibly robust and incredibly effective policy. And let me describe why. Okay, the number one thing is, as, as is outlined, and I'm looking at policy 4.3, if you want to look, it's, it's our desire, it's our responsibility to investigate every single issue of use of force within these guidelines and we want the opportunity and we do this to be professional, we want to do it promptly, we want to do it effectively and we want to have that investigation be thorough. And so the first thing, and I know we've, I'm going over a little bit of information that we've talked about and the chief has referred to, but you need to look and see what it says. And, and you can look at this and follow along, but let me just outline for you, what is a blue team use of force review? Any use of firearm, whether you pointed at someone or you use it, any use of a control device, a taser, any use, that's a use of force. That triggers a blue team review. And we have what we call immediate use of force, the intermediate. You're talking about use of hands, you're talking about single cross face, hands-on, pepper spray, baton, any of those things. In our policy, those are use of force issues. A lot of places are not. In addition to that, we even have what we call dynamic takedowns. So without weapons, but even a forced takedown can and typically is reviewed, okay? A lot of places don't ever review those unless there's a use of force incident, there's a complaint, there's those, that kind of, those kinds of things. And then in addition to that, there's more. Any bodily injury, any bodily injury, that's a use of force issue. Any complaint by a subject about injury is a use of force review, okay? In addition to that, there may be circumstances where there's a likely, likelihood of injury, where there's conduct by our officers that's a problem and that can be a use of force incident. And so that's a big deal. Even, you know, we've talked a little bit about even shooting an animal, those sorts of things. In our policy, that can trigger a use of force. Many places doesn't have anything like this. Okay, so let me take this through the, the whole issue and I think this will help, help us understand how it really works. And I've been here four months and I've been involved in a lot of different reviews. So here it is. Okay, first thing, the sergeant or someone else brings one of these use of force circumstances to light. And what happens is an on-duty supervisor is dispatched, not the supervisor there, the on, an on-duty supervisor. And any supervisor who has not or is not involved can work on it. But if you're involved in any manner, you cannot be the on-duty supervisor to review the incident. It's just common sense, right? Okay, in addition to that, you have that on-duty supervisor, they review the reports and what are we talking about? Narratives, photos, videos, all videos, all narratives, all reports and they list all the officers. So it's not like you're not picking out who is, you're reviewing their conduct, it's just, it's all officers. And what is the admonition to our supervisor? They are to examine an injury, make sure that person immediately gets attention, goes to the hospital or whatever's necessary. And we also do this admonition where we agree, sir, ma'am, you're involved in a use of force incident. We are interviewing you about the use of force incident and anything you say will not be used against you in a criminal investigation. And the other thing is, we also record all of the witnesses' comments, whatever they say, we record it, all right? And so anyway, they're all recorded, the officers are interviewed separately away from each other. We don't do group interviews, we do individual interviews with each officer and so there's less likely issues of confusion, colluding in any story or even psychologically being driven to repeat whatever your partner said, any of those sorts of things. Okay, so there's also an admonition to get it done quickly. And so by end of shift, my experience is by end of shift, if possible, and it depends on the time of day and what's going on, but certainly immediately. So once that supervisor, that on-duty supervisor makes a determination that there's the possibility of a violation of our policies, and you can see we have extensive policies, then what that happens is, okay, now you have to immediately notify your chain of command, up the chain of command and further than that, you need to notify the professional standards unit or as we have referred to it as internal affairs, but it's the PSU unit. And so very quickly, all of this information that's been collected, all this information and narratives, all these photographs, all these other information, we've all got it together and that's immediately turned over to the, to the PSU unit. That unit will go to the scene if necessary. And so now the PSU unit is involved. And so what happens is that, that once there's an issue of concern, the investigative process works. And this is unique to the Topeka Police Department and, and my experience with other agencies is that each individual in this blue team, they write their own review of our policies, what they saw, the information, they all look at the video, they all look at any narratives, we listen to any, and this is on each of these use of force. And I don't see what the lieutenant wrote. And I'm in the chain of command, so the lieutenant writes their, their opinion, gives their information, makes recommendations and we all, we don't just look at the incident, we look at other general orders. Because if you're going to look at their conduct, as the chief has said, and I agree with it, you know, you need to look at what happened before, what happens after, what sort of issues are there? And, and, and I won't get into the specifics that he talked about, but we've seen several issues where the use of force may be justified or legal, but there are other issues in there and there's always the opportunity, if I'm a lieutenant, a captain, a major or as the legal advisor, I'm going to talk about breach of policies, I'm going to talk about other things that I saw in the video, I'm going to talk about this and I'm going to say, because I'm the legal advisor, I'm going to talk about issues of conduct, I'm going to talk about the issues of law, I'm going to talk about the policy violations, all those things.
Mr. Attorney?
Pardon me?
Pardon the interruption, but I, but I, if I'm hearing correctly what you're describing and I appreciate the fact that you are walking us through an extensive process in which there are several layers of recorded processes in which you have both civilian reports being recorded as well as police officer reports and being able to go back to the site. However, I do have a question because I think that it's important, what you are saying and I think that this is where the questions that you're receiving are coming from the members of the council. As an attorney, you received at least eight years of education, which trained you on how to interpret laws, correct?
Correct.
Okay, which means that you are educated specifically on the language of the laws and there is an understanding that makes those laws appropriate and not appropriate and you have an understanding on what is the practice of the law?
Yes, that's one aspect.
Therefore, there is a bias that comes with that evaluation of that law because of your practice and your experience. And I think that the questions that are coming back to our, our independent police officer are not questions of the integrity of the process and they're not questions even so of the integrity of the police officers that are part of these investigations. I think that the body is much more interested in the fact that those individuals that are receiving this investigation and who are looking at it, including those, if I have the understanding correctly, of the PSU are individuals who happen also to be police officers that have been trained in the same policies, in the same processes, in the same language that everybody else has, which is why it's so important for us to have an independent police auditor who is outside of the police department that is able to take a look at this, which is why I think that the questions of the council are not as much with regards to the, to the policies and the thorough work that I'm to the policies and the thorough work that I'm certain that all of you do, but I think that what the body is trying to understand, and I don't speak for anybody, and please, I want somebody to raise their voice and say, Michelle, you're absolutely off-base, that is not where I was going. But I think that where the questions are going is, the intent is understanding how much ability does an independent person that does not report to the police department have, by understanding those policies and seeing them from a more, away from the police department point of view.
Okay, and I would-
Sometimes biases are able to creep in, not because they're bad, but just because of the way that we issue our policies and how we behave.
Well, one of the questions that I heard several people talk about is, what did the independent police auditor look at? And so if you have all the body camera footage, and it's not turned off, and you have the individual statements by the people who are witnesses, and you have recordings of those statements, and you have the opportunity to ask any other questions you want later, then it would seem to me that, yeah, there certainly is an issue of that, but it's also, you're looking at a thorough investigation, but you may want to ask other additional questions. And that's why you have an independent auditor. And ultimately, the investigating supervisors of the police department are subject to discipline for actions failing to investigate, failing to document, or failing to evaluate correctly.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Legal Counsel. You know, my whole issue is, my question is, could he go, could Mr. Colazo go in and review, and interview the police? That's a no. For all the best intentions, and all of the legalities, and all the chain of command, that does not seem like an investigator, maybe that's not what he's supposed to be doing, but it's just like us, us looking at ourselves. It's like us doing our own examinations. And that's why, again, I will state that I think it's very important that we look into a true citizens review panel. I do not profess to be any kind of expert on it, but I think we have to have the dialogue. So thank you, Mayor.
And-
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I go forward a little bit further?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, at this point, it's been reviewed by everybody up the chain of command, but if there's an issue of criminal conduct, then that administrative process stops, it is given to an outside agency to review, and there's going to be ultimately, if it's a criminal review and a criminal investigation, it will go to the district attorney's office for review for criminal conduct. So you have that. And then ultimately, then, at that point, it can go to the outside auditor if there's no charges pending.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So, Counsel, you represent who?
I represent the city of Topeka, and I'm a senior city attorney, and I also represent the police department as part of those responsibilities.
Okay, so, we know that. So there's going to be, whether we know it or not, somewhere in the back of your head, probably some bias. I'm not saying there is, maybe there is, maybe there isn't. The mayor said that we can't get rid of bias. My bottom line is, is that it does not seem like this is independent, because Colazo, Mr. Colazo is still an employee of the city, and he answers to the city manager, the chief answers to the city manager. I don't know if you answer to the city manager. The bottom line is, is that as we look at issues of police reform, transparency, the citizens have to be a part of that transparency. I don't know how it's going to look, I don't profess to know how it's going to look. And I thank you for all of your information, but I am still convinced that this is us reviewing ourselves, and that's not a good look at this point in history, at this point in time, in this particular city, and so I will stay with wanting to move ahead on that. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other questions? I think I've gone through most of the process. We left it at criminal conduct review, independent review. Ultimately, if there are no further charges, then, if there's no charges filed, then it goes back to the administrative process. And I will tell you that in the various circumstances that we've reviewed in the four months I've been here, there have been a fair number of personnel actions arising out of these things, even if the actual use of force was cleared. In fact, we had a police shooting that went to, I believe it was Kansas City, Kansas, and then it was reviewed there. We also notify the United States Attorney's Office. Any other questions about our process, or anything I can do to help give clarity to them?
Counselwoman Nager, Counselwoman Heller.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I still have a lot to learn about this, but in your description, and Mr. Colazo's as well, about this chain of command, I've always sort of wondered, when I was taking, and I'm just asking at this point, a lot of times we do get comments that people think that the department is a little top-heavy, in terms of budget, as well as how we're deploying the people that we have. And it sounded like then we, if I got this right, the professional standards board is sort of the start, and then the loop around the end of this process. How many people are on that board?
Well, there's not a professional standards board. What you're referring to, or what I think you're referring to, is the use of force committee.
Yes, but I thought it was the same as the PSU, which was the same as the internal-
No.
Okay.
The use of force is actually not a Blue Team matter. It is a separate use of force for those that are not encompassed, and you can see if you want to look at 4.3.5. This is a committee chair of the rank of major, a committee co-chair of the rank of captain or lieutenant, the police legal advisor, that'd be me, and then six members, the range master, defensive tactics, two supervisors, and two members by the FOP. That's a use of force review team relative to a variety of other things. They don't actually, this would be, we review any use of force not encompassed by the issues that arise out of our use of force Blue Team. So for example, anytime there is an arrest, and there's any hands-on, that's going to be reviewed individually by this use of force review team. Anytime there's a takedown of someone, that's when, and I think the last meeting we had, it was about three and a half hours long, and we look at individual people, officers, what they did, how they did it. Or, for example, there was an arrest on a porch, and the question was, did they violate policy by touching the throat or head, and what happened, and all that? There were not complaints generated about that, it was this use of force review team looking at the video and looking at what happened. So I don't know if that makes it more confusing or less confusing.
I'm just trying to track, in part, how much time we're putting into this, and how many people, if we've got, and I might be off one or two, but about nine people on this review board, and they start out, and then it goes through the sergeant, the lieutenant, the captain, the major, and the deputy chief, and then it goes back, I mean, how much time are each, it's going through all these steps, or did you name them all because they're all combined in that board?
Chief, you can-
Chief?
You may want to explain.
Okay, so anytime there's a use of force that takes place, it's reviewed by the field supervisor, then it goes to his lieutenant, or her lieutenant, then the captain, the major, then it goes to the legal advisor, then it goes to the deputy chief, and then it goes to the independent auditor. In that process, after that, then the use of force goes to the defensive action team, the use of force review board. Their purpose is to look at that use of force and say, is there anything that we can improve, training-wise, improve this technique, like Mr. Colazo pointed out, the handcuffing? That was also identified by that use of force committee. And so then they notify training and say, okay, we need to, whether it's give this individual officer, we're training on handcuffing, or is it something the whole department needs training on? That's what the use of force looks at. Is there training that we can improve things, make things better? So when you talk about the amount of time, it's time-heavy, most definitely, but the problem is, or the good thing is, it needs to be done right. And that's, you know, what the legal advisor is saying. In all of his experience, he's never seen a process that we are so thorough. And so, and I would greatly argue whether, you know, we're top-heavy with commanders at the police department. That's another discussion topic, but-
Exactly.
So, does that answer that?
Well, it helps, because I was trying to track it, and I had the board at the beginning, and then I had it going through these seven chain of command, and then coming in again. So I think I'm now corrected, and I understand it a little bit better. In the, you know, partly we're looking at the value of the independent officer, and just how this whole thing is working. In the example that you gave, Chief, how could an incident have gone through that many levels of the chain of command and the board, or the chain of command first, I guess, and then have the top-down look at it and go, oh, my gosh?
Because a lot of those processes are looking at the use of force. The legal advisor, myself, the deputy chief, and the major, bureau commander, their primary focus is to look at the whole thing. And so what led up to it, what got here, and was, if there was corrective action that needed to take place, was at the correct level. And so when we talk about, you know, the checks and balances, and when we talk about policing ourselves, that's why all those layers are in there. Because somebody may miss something, or somebody may not see something, and somebody else may see it. And so when we talk about the independent police auditor, as I said, I guarantee you, most time it's going to be caught long before it gets to him. But when it gets to him, and he has an issue with it, he can first with the city manager. And then the city manager, myself, independent auditor sit down, and we talk about those cases, if they're there.
Thank you. I think, just to make a comment, it would be helpful to have at least some information about those results of that process, and I realize that the independent auditor is just a piece of that, but to have a report that just comes out and said everything was fine.
And we did have that discussion the last time the city manager and Mr. Colazo and I met, and city legal was in there as well, and we talked about that. It's important to point out that, you know, there may have been 100 use of forces, the use of forces were all good, but there were other corrective actions that took place. And so, in the future, I believe that Mr. Colazo's report will reflect cursory issues that were identified and corrected.
Thank you. And if I may, I wanted to ask about one other thing, and I visited with Mr. Colazo about it, and that is the actual citizens filing complaints, which is a big issue to a lot of people. And in the past, there was a procedure, and I think it was before your time as chief, but I'm not sure, let's just say so for now, where if anybody had a complaint, they had, they could go to the police station itself, and go to the front desk and say that they wanted to file a complaint. And the standard protocol at the time was, they got told, hang on just a second, let us have you talk with a supervisor. And someone was brought from the back, and then the complaint was whisked off into a room, and was given a chance to talk it through, and as a result, very few complaints were That has changed, as I understand it, for a couple of reasons, and I'd like to have either the attorney or chief, or Mr. Colazo, discuss what has changed about the complaint filing procedure.
Yeah, you're exactly right, and it used to be that the complaint also had to be notarized, and all that stuff. Our process changed quite some time ago. We have a very liberal reporting system. You can do it anonymously, online, you can call it in, you can come down and talk to an officer at the desk, they've been informed that they've been trained, that they take it and forward the information, they can go to PSU itself, or they can call PSU. And then we now have Mr. Colazo, who is a civilian that works in the city manager's office, has nothing to do with the police department, and so they can come down and not even have any contact with a law enforcement officer, and file their complaint numerous different ways. And so we have a very, very liberal reporting system, because my position is, if you have an issue with the police department, you should be able to air that grievance.
Chief, and I think that I would be remiss if we forget to add the fact that we also have the citizens advisory council that people can also use.
Yeah, we have the chief's citizen advisory council, it's made up of individuals throughout the community, and there is also an email address for them, cac@topeka.org, in which you can also lodge complaints, questions, or anything, provide information, whatever you want to do. So we have many, many different ways that are non-intrusive for individuals to air their grievances or complaints.
And if I could push that a little farther, because I think this is really important to a lot of people. How would, if I'm feeling like I've been profiled, or harmed in some way, how would I know that? How does the word get around that I can just go straight to Ed Colazo instead of walk into the police department? How do I know that?
Well, we put that information out, and we can do another public service push or announcement if you'd like, but, you know, the easiest, you can just go online. And now I've also added an email account on our webpage, underneath my name, it's chiefsoffice@topeka.org, and I can tell you, I put that in place about three, four weeks ago, and it's unbelievable the amount of individuals that respond to that, and that was real easy. So, you know, we can put out all the different ways again, if we'd like to do that, but we also got teltdv.org, any of those things, you can voice concerns.
Thank you so much. I had learned that, you know, from Ed in part, about some of the new opportunities. I do think that we, that's worth some feedback from folks about what you think of it, and how well the word could be out, because if you've just been threatened, and you're upset, and you're not familiar with that system, you don't necessarily know where to go, and you don't trust anybody, and that could be something that some feedback could help on. Thank you, thank you.
Additional comments for the independent police auditor discussion? All right. Chief, Ed, and everybody, thank you so much. And our legal counsel for the police department, thank you for this conversation. Again, as we continue to expanding on everything that we are doing in our community to ensure that we have transparent processes, these conversations, albeit long, are extremely necessary. And the great thing is that they're also recorded, so you can actually go and pull them up on YouTube, and make sure that you can review them, and that way you can continue that conversation, and also share them. I know that it's not cool to share the council meeting on your Twitter feed, or on your Twitter feed, but this one is one of those that is worth passing on. I think typically around this time, we take a recess of a few minutes, people need to stretch, people need to just, you know, have, so if we could return in 10 minutes, that would make it 8:39, or 8:40, that would be wonderful. So if the council nods at me, or if you know that this is your desire, all right, I have consensus, and we are going to recess to not exceed 10 minutes. Again, very deep and important discussion, a very timely discussion that we will continue. At this point in time, we move on to action items. Item 5A, if the clerk would read.
Mayor, I think we're at consent.
Consent agenda.
We're at the consent agenda.
Oh, yeah, I consent, sorry.
Nice try.
Okay, so if you please read the consent agenda.
Item A is the minutes from the regular meeting of June 16, 2020. And item B is applications. A list of cereal malt beverage and open after midnight license applications were distributed via email this afternoon. Staff is recommending approval.
Okay, we have the consent agenda in front of us, the minutes and applications. What is the pleasure of the body?
Yep. She has to do roll call.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Padilla.
Did you do it? Oh, I meant roll call, okay, I'm so sorry. Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilwoman Padilla, and a second by Councilwoman Ortiz. Comments or questions on this?
I have a comment, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, and I know it's odd on consent agenda. I actually just wanted to praise staff really quick. There are some applications on this consent agenda that had an issue where they maybe have not filled out their paperwork in a timely manner and had a brief shortage of time, which they may have not had a license during the very profitable July 4 holiday. I received some calls, talked with legal, talked with the staff down in the offices there, and in the clerk's office, and they were all very receptive, and we got it all figured out very quickly, learned some things we didn't know before about how to get it done, and I just wanted to applaud them for making that happen because it helped a lot of businesses during the holiday. So just wanted to thank them for that. Thank you.
Thank you for your remarks. Additional comments or questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we proceed with the vote by roll call.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Neger?
Yes.
Dobler? He's gone. Duncan?
Councilwoman Dobler is gone, but we do have the deputy mayor here.
Yes for Duncan.
And Lesser?
Yes.
And Emerson. And Emerson?
Yes.
That is nine yeses.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. Now we do move on into the action items. Action item A, if the clerk would read.
5A is a resolution introduced by city manager Brent Trout temporarily suspending certain governing body rules and procedures in response to the COVID-19 pandemic.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. As you showed, we need to continue this suspension of rules. The date is August 12th, which should be have no meeting the first Tuesday in August. It is the second meeting, or actually, the second Tuesday is through that period. And we'll put it back on the agenda at that point.
What is the pleasure of the body?
Move approval.
Okay. We have approval by the deputy mayor, and we have a second by Councilwoman Neger. Comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, we proceed by voting by roll call.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Neger?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
That is nine yeses.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to non-action items. Action item A, if the clerk would read.
6A is a discussion regarding the 2021 City of Topeka operating budget.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. So we begin to continue on the steps necessary in order to consider and get approval of our 2021 budget. So tonight, this is our introduction really to the public of the budget, and Jessica will do an overview of our proposed budget, covering some key points in her presentation. Jessica?
Hi, governing body, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen.
Wait, I may have to make it, hold on.
Okay.
I just fixed it, there you go.
Thank you. Let me pick the correct item to share. Okay, so thank you for giving us the floor tonight to go ahead and talk about the 2021 preliminary budget. As of now, we, the city manager and I, along with HR and legal and different meetings, have met in either small group meetings or in individual meetings with every member of the governing body. So tonight's discussion is really about laying out that overall budget narrative for the wider community, and we'll go ahead and just jump right in. Okay. So the agenda is going to cover the budget goals, the broad budget challenges, overall general fund revenue and expense, a quick summary of some of the other funds that we get a lot of questions on, and then we'll discuss the overall budget construction, the actual book, and then quickly go over the timeline and next steps. So the proposed 2021 budget goals was put together to support the governing body's approved budget priorities, which include, sorry, I'm just looking for the correct page, which include investing in infrastructure, continuing a commitment to public safety, continuing a commitment to developing neighborhoods, selected strategic investments toward quality of life, and then improving fiscal sustainability. And on page 20 of the budget book, you can see the basic allocation into those different budget priorities. Now, obviously, one of the challenges we faced is presenting a balanced budget that strives to maintain current service levels while also recognizing the constraints surrounding both revenue and expense. And then the other budget priority that was communicated to us early in 2021 was to support the goal to fully fund public safety staffing levels, so that'd be at both the police and And then another goal, budget goal, that we wanted just to communicate a little bit more tonight, and I think this was discussed earlier in the meeting, but one of those budget goals was also, is also to support the community involvement and communication and overall city operations. And so just to highlight some of the programs that the city has instituted and will continue to fund and work with, you know, these are just three of the, just a sampling of what the city does, but the Behavioral Health Crisis Program that the chief mentioned earlier, which is a collaboration between TPD and Belayo, the Alternative Sentencing Court, which we've seen strong results from, will continue that into 2021, and then also the social service grants for the approved community programs. So again, this is just a small subset of programs that the city implements to make sure to involve the community overall and improve communication. What it doesn't include is just the different CDVG grants that the city implement and helps with.
It's not all that cheap enough.
Okay. That the city works with, and then into 2021, there'll be more CDVG and COVID-related funding that the city's Department of Neighborhood Relations will be administering. And so then talking about budget challenges, and some of these are consistent with the challenges that we faced over the last several years and, you know, will likely continue to face. So the biggest one, in terms of balancing the budget as we started the process, is that we've seen quite modest revenue growth over the last several years, so about, just slightly over 1% on average. And then in terms of the expenditure growth, it continues to outpace revenue. And, you know, and a lot of that is related to personnel costs, you know, as they are 79% of the city's overall budget. As those grow, if you don't have the revenue base to grow with it, it starts to create imbalance. And so then you also have the ongoing discussions surrounding deferred capital maintenance. And so this budget, you know, the first priority, as has been in the last several years, any surplus, we look to help fund capital improvements. And then the most unique, which I think many of us at the beginning of 2021 probably wouldn't have put this as the budget challenge, but it is quite challenging to project what the potential long-term impacts from the current health emergency will be, whether that's on the revenue side with economically sensitive revenues, or it could potentially be on the expense side, you know, just related to response. And so trying to balance what could likely happen or what might happen versus funding the ongoing service needs of the community was a difficult discussion this year. So in terms of the overall general fund revenue, we are about 96.2 million. The city's largest revenue source continues to be sales tax at 32%. And as we have seen as a group, it's very difficult to project sales tax in a fluid environment. We will be projecting sales tax at 97% of the adopted 2020 budget. You know, that is an attempt to recognize that the economy may not be back in full force going into 2021, but we also didn't feel comfortable taking it down further without additional information. And so much like this year and last year, if the city sees a significant decrease or fluctuation from the budget, we will have to take steps likely on the expense side to ensure that we end the year in a way that supports financial sustainability. And then on the ad lorm taxes, continues to be our second largest revenue source. It's about 30% overall. And then the smaller fees make up the balance. However, in the next couple of slides, we'll discuss it, several of these smaller fees or permits or other types of revenue have challenged us in the current year and will likely challenge us next year. So in terms of the general fund revenues, speaking specifically about ad lorm taxes, overall, the mill rate will remain essentially flat. Now, once we approve, the governing body approves the budget in August and it's sent to the county, the county will make, will do whatever they do over there to work with the assessed value, and then the actual mill rate will be set. So this is what we will be submitting on the state form, but the actual rates could change slightly as they have, you know, in past years. So what's really important here, at least in, you know, looking at the overall budget and then the overall community, is that the city's assessed value grew almost 3% from the previous year to this year. And I think that that's, you know, definitely made the budget process easier because we were able to capture a little over 1.3 million of additional revenue without impacting the rate, the mill rate. And so what that reflects is an increase in assessed value for a variety of properties, new properties coming into the tax base, or certain properties now being classified in different ways and different value. And so that growth is really important to the 2021 budget. So for all the hard work that the governing body, Go Topeka, Visit Topeka, all of the community members, you know, I think that's a reflection of the strong focus over the last several years on growth and trying to attract new growth to the community. And I think 2021, we've realized some of that. So that definitely helped in the budget process. In terms of our sales tax revenue, this is just showing actuals from 2014 through 2019. It shows the adopted budget for 2020. It does not assume any projection for year-end for 2020, it is just the adopted. And then it shows the 21 preliminary budget, which is 3% off of the adopted 2020. So that is a little over $900,000 of lost revenue. In terms of other revenue, the zoo, the entrance fee is projected to be increased by $2 a ticket. And, you know, in that discussion with the zoo and the city manager, you know, there's ways for community members to receive reduced or free admission, you know, for instance, the library, you can find several tickets that you can use to go to the zoo free of charge. So there's different ways that the zoo will be reaching out and working with the community that they can still, you know, participate and enjoy this great resource. Another item is the planning department, which is a same-day inspection fee is projected to increase to $100 from $50. And then last year, the governing body approved the Neighborhood Relations Department to implement a foreclosure home registry, and so that is projected to yield about $75,000 in 2021. And then on the other side of the revenue, in terms of decreases, franchise fee revenue is projected to go down to be consistent with past-year collections, and then investment income is projected to reduce as well, just with the overall economic and lower interest rate expectations. But the combination of those definitely made the budget more challenging. So then looking at general fund expenditures, overall public safety continues to be a large portion of the city's overall expense pattern, and that includes municipal, PD, and fire. And also just to highlight what the chief said earlier, you know, some of these programs are passing along funding to specific programs, you know, looking at the Belayo Behavioral Health, I think, you know, at the municipal court, you know, funding it at a level where we can come up with these, you know, different programs such as the Alternative Sentency Court, and then with the Fire Department as well. And so then the expenditures also reflect personnel at about 79% of total expense overall, and that's consistent with other communities, you know, government service is heavily dependent upon the personnel that work for the government to deliver services. The vacancy credit was 1.5 million in 2020, and that's been brought down to 800,000 in 2021. And so what that is, it basically assumes that a certain number of positions will remain vacant throughout the year, which yields a level of savings. And so the way that we got into the 800,000, about 600,000 of that reflects fire and PD personnel. And the goal is to fully staff both PD and fire, but based on constraints surrounding the amount of people you can put into an academy, and then also facing increased retirements, and then current vacancy level, we've worked with fire and police to come up with an accurate number in terms of the vacancy credit that we would likely have to keep vacant just because of the size of academies. And then the other 200,000 really just reflects overall vacancies throughout other departments. You know, the personnel line also reflects the position eliminations that we've, that will be implemented if the approved budget passes. And then overall, the expense patterns are fairly similar to prior years, with several exceptions... exceptions, the police department will be likely outsourcing the tow lot and then also changing the way that the animal control division is, is worked. And then also, we've lowered the overall snow and ice allocation in Public Works based on the last several years' actual spending. Okay, so then looking at other funds, the summary, sales tax funds continue to focus on improving the pavement condition index and other infrastructure needs. Obviously, these funds will be impacted if you saw sales tax decline. Utilities reflects the governing body's approved rate increases and continues to focus on infrastructure improvement. The internal service funds, which has been an ongoing discussion, reflects generally flat operations year over year. And then the other property tax levy-supported funds, meaning debt service and special liability, will continue to support their regular operations. And then the debt service fund reflects the CIP that was recently approved, including the Pulp Quancy BiAdapt project. So then for citizens that are looking for the city's budget, it can be located on the city's website under the Department of Finance and Budget section. And so you can go on there and you can download it. If you send us an email, we can also follow up with you and send that to you in PDF if you can't find it on the website. But in terms of the budget, the way to use it is, you know, the, the city's manager's transmittal letter kind of just breaks it out in a summary of what's included in the proposal. Then as you walk through, you'll see the budget priorities, you'll see a summary of revenue and expense, that there's a discussion of the overall budget. Then you'll look into the department budgets, and the way that they're broken out in terms of the actual book is by governing body priority. And as I mentioned earlier, page 29 lists those budget priorities, so you can follow along there. It also will include key metrics for performance that each department follows or reviews. And then it also includes a four-year budget history. So for this year, it has the preliminary 21 budget, the adopted 20 budget, and then actual numbers for 19 and 18. And then it also will have a four-year history of the adopted budget positions and then an overall summary of budgeted funds. So this budget, the document can feel at times a little cumbersome, but anybody in, in the budget department and in finance would be happy to walk people through if they have additional questions. So in terms of what's coming up next, this weekend on Saturday, the council budget workshop will take place at 9:00 AM in the Holiday Building. And in that budget discussion, we will primarily be focusing on the property tax-funded programs, departments, and so that includes the general fund, debt service fund, and special liability fund. We will be covering the police department, fire department, municipal court, Public Works, at least the divisions funded from the general fund, the planning department, neighborhood relations, zoo, city council, mayor, city manager, the finance department, which will include both the general fund and the debt service fund, the city attorney, which will include the general fund and the special liability fund, and then the human resources department, which will include general fund, workers' compensation, health fund, and other risk management funds. And so each department will be available to discuss changes or programs that are funded through the 2021 budget. The next opportunity for discussion will be on July 14th, which will be next Tuesday, and that will focus on internal service funds, including fleet facilities, parking, and IT, along with the federal funds exchange funds, and then any other, any other specific, you know, questions regarding internal service or enterprise funds we could discuss at that point. And then the following week, on July 21st, we will focus on utilities. Bob and Nicole will be available to go through their budget and overall operational changes that they're implementing. So that'll include water, wastewater, and sewer. July 28th will be the session for public comment, and then the, the department will follow up on any follow-up questions. And then we're still looking at August 11th for budget adoption. So in the meantime, you know, we're available to try to answer questions. I know that we currently have some that we will be getting back to council members on, but at this time, that's really the overall budget presentation. I'll go ahead and stop sharing my screen now.
Any questions for Ms. Laimandola? I know that we do have somebody signed up for public comment, and I opened it up for questions, but would you like to hear the public comment before we enter into discussion? Councilwoman Nager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a quick comment. One of the things that was put forward by the council whenever we talked with Ms. Laimandola and the city manager about talking about what our priorities were for the 2021 budget was not the levy in response to the health crisis that is going on due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This has put constraints on what they've been able to go ahead and build within the budget. And I just want to make that clear to citizens that that's one of the things that we're trying to figure out, the right compromise between not putting too much burden on the taxpayers, but also not taking away too many services. So you'll see that reflected in some of how they've constructed the budget. And it's something that, this would be the seventh year in a row, I believe, that the mill levy hasn't been lifted.
Yes.
Something that we should be discussing and considering in not only this year, but yours now. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Before we proceed with further discussion, I would like to allow and call up the person that signed up for public comment on, on this item. If Danielle, music can come up.
I do not see Danielle in the chambers. No one's coming forward.
Okay. Open for discussion from the body. Councilwoman Hiller.
I just have a question in response to some, a request before Ms. Laimandola has provided us some detail on budget line items. And so the question would be, if, if somebody from the public wanted to look at this book that we have here online or get a copy of it, where would they go? And related to that, will the line item budgets that we, we now have some of, but I think there are some more to come, will those be posted as well? So if people wanted to look at them, they could?
As we, as I mentioned, the actual budget book is available on the City of Topeka's website, the finance department. You can look at the, the budget section. And in terms of the line by line, I hadn't discussed that with the city manager.
Okay, so, so the citizen would go to the, open up the website, go to departments, go to finance, and find the budget inside the finance department page? And then if, if the, if the other pages are posted, they'll be right there with it?
So on this, if you go to T O P E K A dot org, you can scroll over the government tab. If you click on the government tab, it'll, it's the second option, so it says boards and commissions, and then right underneath it will say budget and performance. If you click on budget and performance, it'll take you to the page that lists the 2021 preliminary budget, the 21 budget engagement presentation, and then the 2020 adopted budget, the 19 adopted budget, and then if, there's the, a link to the open budget portal, the checkbook portal, the dashboard, the performance measures, and then other budgets in prior years.
Great, thank you. That was it.
Additional comments or questions for staff? Councilwoman Duncan, I want to leave you out if you're raising your hand.
I was not, but I will just, whoa, that seems extra loud, or I'm talking loud because there's only two, three of us here. I will just remind the public, we have a work, public workshop this Saturday, and we will be digging into it extensively for all day, I think, so yay, but I'll just throw that out to the public to remind them, we, we are doing that this Saturday, so if you have any thoughts, obviously after then also, but between now and Saturday, send them to me and I'm happy to incorporate them into our discussion.
Okay. Seeing no other comments or questions on this item, we proceed to item B if the clerk would read.
Discussion regarding the 2019 Consolidated Annual Action Plan Amendment.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Due to the receipt of monies from HUD through community development block grant funding related to coronavirus that Congress passed, there was additional money that we've received. And in order to go forward with spending it, we have to approve an amendment to our 2019 Consolidated Action Plan. Cory is here to go through that for you and then answer any questions you may have. Cory?
Good evening, governing body. As the city manager said tonight, I want to talk to you about the proposed amendment to the 2019 Consolidated Action Plan. This is required for us to receive, the City of Topeka, to receive 3.1, approximately 3.1 million dollars in CARES Act funding from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. $1,109,262 is in CDBG, Community Development Block Grant CV funds, and another $2,37,575 in Emergency Solution Grant CV funding. These funds have some pretty strict regulations, as you have received the guide to quick eligible activities, which really outlines specifically what we can use these funds for. It also has to be used to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus, so even more specific activities. So the proposed plan for the use of the CDBG CV funds will provide a mobile testing unit in southeast Topeka to help purchase testing supplies, equipment, rent space, and personal protective equipment. The health agency predicts it will test approximately 10,400 people with these additional funds. The funds will also provide approximately 40 small businesses in the community with grants to alleviate the hardships of COVID by helping with COVID-related expenses, where the owner of the business is low to moderate income, or 51% of the employees are low to moderate income, with preference being given to minority and women-owned businesses. None of the funds in this category will be given to businesses who have already received another funding source related to COVID. The use of the ESG CV funds can only be used for specific activities, including homeless prevention, rapid rehousing, homeless management information system, and shelter operations, so those four categories exclusively. This proposed plan will provide rapid rehousing and homeless prevention to the 2019-funded emergency aid agencies in the amount of 559,469 and another $1,478,106 to assist the Topeka Rescue Mission and the Center for Safety and Empowerment with shelter operations, which will include security, rent, utilities, meals, and furniture for a total of $2,037,575. These funds will assist approximately 1,000 people in the community with homeless prevention, rapid rehousing, and shelter. And with that, I will see if you have any questions for me.
All right, thank you for the report, governing body. Questions for Cory? We do have some individuals signed up to speak on this item. We have Kristy Greschen, who has signed up to speak.
Hello, good evening. My name is Kristy Greschen, and I am a member of Most Purehearted Mary Catholic Church. I'm also a member of Topeka Jump. There are many items on tonight's agenda that Jump cares deeply about. We do expect to be involved in the policing reform conversation in some capacity. However, I'm here tonight to speak to the approval of the amendment to the Consolidated Action Plan. Topeka Jump applauds city staff for making the application to receive additional HUD dollars so the city can properly respond to the harsh impact of COVID-19 on working low-income families. Families are impacted by loss of wages and by the threat of foreclosure or eviction due to the stay-at-home order and slow transitions back to work. Housing is the strong foundation on which our lives are built. Housing is an anchor to pursue our dreams. Anchored to decent, safe, secure housing is quality education, access to physical and mental health care, peace, and rest. Preventing people who are on the brink of homelessness from losing their homes is essential to Topeka and Shawnee Counties COVID-19 recovery plan. This extra HUD money is not enough to help all the families who need help right now, so I hope there will be more dollars to come from the city and county that will go toward affordable housing. However, this consolidated action plan proposal is a start. Some of these items I'm going to mention here have partially been addressed previously, but I would appreciate going through them. Our only request is that the money set aside for small businesses be prioritized toward companies who rarely get help otherwise, the underdog, the forgotten, the small and minority businesses. So how will companies not usually involved in these processes get notified? In an attempt to add transparency to the selection process, who will be invited to be a part of the review process with Go Topeka? Two years ago, Jump watched a similar process play out where the underdogs got pushed to the side, and I'm referring to the $2 million left over from the JATO sales tax that was dished out after a less than satisfactory proposal process. Please do not let this happen again. Go Topeka needs to be thoughtful and inclusive about these small business loans getting handed out. So my final question, will there be a list of criteria to use in the selection process that prioritizes companies, such as those directly related to the construction of affordable housing? We're pleased to see these additional dollars come to the City of Topeka, and it is our desire to see the questions we've raised be considered as part of this matter moves forward. Even more important, though, in dealing with one's ability to call somewhere home is the study presentation on housing that's on the schedule for next week on July 14th, and Jump will be present at that, for public comment at that time as well. Thank you for your time, and I stand for questions.
Thank you for your comments. Councilwoman Valdivia Alcana.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming up and speaking as one of the members of Topeka Jump. I think that you bring up some very relevant questions. I don't, you know, we're seeing all kinds of things where money that was meant for COVID businesses, and I'm talking in the extreme here, went to entities like PF Chang's and Kanye West and all of that. So, I mean, we're looking at a very localized effort here, and definitely the underserved businesses, those businesses that are just working tirelessly, I hope that there's a way that, you know, there could be a community participation in that selection process. And if you don't get any answers on those questions, certainly feel free to, I think you emailed them, or email them to me and I, I can find out for you.
Okay. I think we've submitted this public comment to the, to the body, so.
I'll have to check my email, but if you don't get any answers, I can certainly find out for you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your time.
At this point in time, any other questions from the governing body? Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I, I haven't had a chance to walk through just some clarification, so if I could ask Cory some questions, kind of running right through this detailed list. So the mobile testing unit would actually be something that we would do in partnership with the Health Department, and they would handle that? with the Health Department, and they would handle that?
Yes. So yes, and they're on the line if you need to speak with them in any, many manner, they're available. 15% of the CDBG CV funds can be used for public service activities, so you will see on the screen here that 166,389.30 is what we allotted for the mobile testing unit, which is exactly 15% of the CDBG award.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, and part of my thought here is, is I think all of this is going to be contracted out to other people rather than anything that we have to manage ourselves, and I was just wanting to double check.
Yes.
Okay.
That's our intention.
So this would be with the Health Department then. I do have, the 40 business grants would be in partnership with GoToPika.
Yes, we're working with, yeah, GoToPika, Ms. Washington, and she might be on the line as well. So we are working with, we'll work with Jump. I enjoy working with Jump, so we'll be happy to get everyone's input. As you can see in that amendment...
You mentioned something that made me a little nervous.
Okay.
And that was that the businesses, I mean, this is a lot of money. This is, and so if you just take 40 into 831, that's $20,000 a business on the average.
It's approximately, and so we just put 40 to make sure that we can meet the...
Understood. But what you said was that it would not, it was only for low, low mod income owners and/or once the workers.
Yes.
But that it would not go to any business that had already received COVID-related funds?
Yes. That's HUD regulation, actually, not, not our regulation.
Well, what I'm thinking is that businesses were able to get PPEs, they were able to get their employees involved in the extra unemployment or those sorts of things, and we also, we authorized JADO money, which went, like, if you're just a sole proprietor, it was $2,000. Or a mid-sized business was only three, and you had to be really big to get five. And, and I know they reached out to the businesses that they knew and that they could find, which means that, would that mean that everybody who's gotten any help so far would not be able to get any of this?
No.
Okay.
So according to Ms. Washington at Greater Topeka Partnership, there were many businesses that were not able to get any of the actual funds that were being spread out from different entities, from federal sources and other sources. Additionally, the, the funds would be paid to the business owner, not to the business owner's employees, so whether they got unemployment would, would not be relevant per se to the business owner being able to get these funds.
Well, we're still spending, you know, the private support for the businesses is still underway, and we still have two more round, well, the July round maybe has just happened, let me think. There's a September and a November round, and so hopefully more work can be done on this, because I would hate to have the people that we reached out to that were in need right away somehow not be able to take advantage of anything, and particularly the minority businesses are pretty much all in Ms. Washington's queue, and so...
Yep. I'd be happy to email the Governing Body that memo about not being able to have been accepted any other federal sources or any kinds of sources related to COVID to receive the CDBG funds, but it is...
That would be even our, I mean, the GoToPika money that we had was our own local money, it wasn't federal money.
Correct. It's pretty specific.
Okay. Then when you, when you've got Catholic Charities, Community Action, and Doorstep, and the city, that's all intended to be rent utility bills, correct?
Rent utilities, yes.
And so, and so those are vendors that we already use, so we would just do supplemental, again, pretty, pretty clean in terms of...
Councilmember, the reason why we chose these particular vendors is because we have existing 2019 contracts. This is a 2019 amendment. We can amend those contracts without going through RFP process because really HUD is really pushing us to try to get this money out as quickly as possible, and as you know, people are in need right now, so.
Right. And then on the, that second set, could you talk just a little bit more about what we would be doing for the COVID-related YW and the rescue mission?
I sure can.
Thank you.
The rescue mission has done a lot of security with their building. They're, they need a lot of upgrades. They're locking their building in various capacities because of COVID, so people can't just enter freely, so they're needing some assistance with their security system, which is quite expensive. They also need some mattresses, so basically furniture for, because it's COVID-related, they're cleaning mattresses and needing to replace, separate, yeah, replacing mattresses. And then their 163 is being, 163,000 of what they're proposing is, is approximately anyway, is going to be spent on meal distribution. They are currently doing meal distribution on the backside of the building without any shelter, anything, and so we're going to help with establishment of a nicer place for them to do meal, meal distribution during COVID.
Okay.
Oh, and rapid rehousing, I'm sorry. So they'll do some rapid rehousing, which is deposit and up to six months' rent, getting people into a home and helping them with rent for up to six months.
Good, because I know that we've got some, will that possibly include the folks that were on the, that had been on the river that, that we were able to get six-month certificates for?
It could.
Just to keep them?
Yeah, it could.
House, okay. And then the YW?
Yes, the YWCA is actually, their building is not really equipped for COVID at all, and so they're looking at renting out another building. And so they're actively looking for that building as, as we speak. I think they've kind of looked at one that they, they seem to like, but no final contract has been made, so all these numbers are quite preliminary, but mainly it's going to be for rent, furnishings, food, and then the utilities of that building.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Duncan?
No, my question was answered, thank you.
Awesome. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing no other questions or comments, I think that we move on to item C, if the clerk would read.
Discussion regarding an ordinance concerning execution of search warrants.
City Manager.
Thank you Mayor. The item that we have tonight is really, was put on there is related to the request considering changing our no-knock warrant policy, and so Working Legal and Councilman Duncan worked together and have created this ordinance, and so tonight, this is a discussion item so that we can discuss if this is what we desire to see considered for approval at the next meeting.
All right. Councilman Duncan?
Thank you Mayor. We obviously spent a long time this evening discussing use-of-force policies and other issues which this relates to, so we will not, I don't need to rehash any comments I made earlier, except to stress that, as I, as I said in our earlier discussion, we have some policies that I think we all agree are good, that I would like to codify into law moving forward, and this is one of those policies. I think as we move forward, there will be a few others. As I said earlier, I expressed some, some hope I can work with the Police Department and our officers to take some of those and bring something here again forward that we can do. So this is what I will call step one of what I think are several steps, but I think that this is one that harms both officers and citizens at times. It's not a safe policy. Our, our department currently doesn't use it for good reason, and I think it's one that we can, we can put forward and pass and, and start, part of what the conversation we've been having. So that's all I have to that. If people have questions, great, if not, that's fine too.
Councilwoman Nager?
Thank you Madam Mayor. Councilman Duncan, how does this change the language that's currently in our, in our code? Or does it add language to our code?
I don't believe it adds language legally. I mean, it essentially takes policy, I think it, I think this ordinance gets some things in line with other laws to make sure everything goes up, but it basically takes policy and just, like I said, codifies into law. It does, it does have a section enforcing the camera use policy, so that also becomes part of this, is that you've got to turn it on and you can't turn it off until, I believe, five minutes before and five minutes after, so it does also make sure that that's part of it when, when warrants are served.
So incorporates the technology into the code as well?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Councilwoman Valdivia Akala?
Thank you Mayor. Councilman Duncan, I just think that you have done really well, a good amount of work with legal and all, and when this does come up for a vote, because I believe it's very needed, I will definitely be supporting it. Thank you.
Additional comments? Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you. Thank you Mayor. Just had some questions for Councilman Duncan, and that would be, were there any issues here in your proposed changes that there was some, some back and forth about with legal or with the department, and if so, would you share those with us?
Yeah, Chief Cochran saw a copy of the first draft. I think there were some language changes that didn't really drastically change anything, but I think got it in line to make it more legally sound or, or in line with police policies, if you will, but nothing that changed, still kept in place the, the intent of this. It clarified the, I guess corrective actions or penalties for people who violate it to ensure that it slides into our process, so that there is, action can be taken against officers if they violate. So, so some of those were tweaks, but to this point, unless he wants to say that we didn't, and I did discuss it with him before, I have not been told by any officer, "Don't do this, this thing's terrible, we hate it." A few, few minor corrections, which we, which were all amenable, so.
Well, now that you answered, then we can kind of throw it out and see if the chief or legal has any, any other comments.
No, basically, Councilwoman Hiller, Councilmember Duncan's right, we added the word reasonably in there because there was a concern that sometimes when they go to execute a warrant, there's loud music and they cannot, the folks inside can't hear anything, and they'd be out there literally all day waiting for somebody to respond, so they wanted to put reasonably likely to be heard, and there was a confusion, as Councilmember Duncan stated, about whether or not any civil penalties would be levied against police officers for executing warrants, and no, we, it started from the outset that it would be discipline is, is where the violation would be remedied, and we just made that a little bit clearer for them, but that's, that's really it.
I provided to legal basically the policy that was passed by Louisville, where they obviously had an issue with Breonna Taylor, and this became a problem, and I basically sent what they did and said, "Let's just do this." And so that was essentially what, what you're looking at is what they set up in Louisville.
Thank you, and good work. I, I certainly support if it, if it's really what our policy is and we should codify it for posterity or whatever, that that's a good idea, so thank you. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you all. Additional questions or comments on this item? There is nobody signed up to speak on the public comment on this item. Seeing no other comments, we move on to the public comment. The first person signed up to speak in the public comments is Regina Platt.
She's making her way up, isn't she?
Mm-hmm.
Well, hello and thank you all for this moment, this evening. Today, I actually want to talk to you about when the peacekeeper becomes peace. In, throughout our city, here in Topeka, Kansas, I work with youth. One of the biggest issues I've seen with youth right now is they're traumatized, whether it's traumatized by past behaviors previously that's been done to their parents, or that's been done for a lack of support within the community. I heard on today where we talked about that there are services available, we have programs set up, but are the programs accessible for every youth, for every family throughout this city? Some of the things that I heard today, I've heard while I've been here, and that everybody's not going to get up and come here. So my question is, are we making everything available to everyone? I asked for a video to be sent out, and the video that I asked to be sent out was an officer, and it was an officer's experience and his connection with restorative justice. I speak a restorative language. The reason why I speak that restorative language is because I've been impacted by trauma here in this city throughout my life. And with being impacted by trauma, and there was a point in my life I felt I did not have a voice. Working in juvenile corrections, when a student is arrested, and I call them students instead of calling them inmate or calling them offender, he's a student, he's learning, he's developing, he's changing, he's being impacted, and so the question is, when does the peacekeeper becomes the peace? Because if the peacekeeper is not at peace internally with himself, we talked about implicit biases, when we're talking about implicit biases, and I'm speaking so fast because everyone knows me, I don't speak this way, but when we're talking about implicit biases, even myself, I, there were some things that I believed, that I understood, that I would not ever do, that I was doing, and I wasn't doing it intentionally. And so when I say, are we going to get to the baseline of dealing with the officer or dealing with community workers or dealing with teachers throughout our city and saying that we're going to stand on a different level, what I'm saying is, are we actually going to push for everybody to stand at the highest level possible? And the only way they can stand at the highest level possible is to receive training and development that's going to press them to do more. And so when I talk about in the community, us asking more of our kids, because we are moving so fast-paced, we're spinning wheels, where children are not getting the attention that they need, nor are they getting the general, the whole variety of instruction that they need inside the classroom, are we connecting in those relationships? Are we allowing that kid to push forward and produce and become the best part of them? So yes, I'm a part of Black Lives Matter, but I'm a part of Topeka, Kansas, and I'm a mother in this community, and when my brown child walks into the store and she's discriminated against because she stands my height, there's an issue with that, or because someone perceives her to be a woman, or understand what it is to be connected to trauma, I have an issue with that. So I asked again, when does the peacekeeper become the peace? When does the peacekeeper become at peace, where he's able and she's able to speak for every, anybody? So I, I said, no longer do we want to stand with the, the paramilitary organizational setups of what policing was. Policing should be a point where it's not policing, but it's peacekeeping, where you are interconnected with the community, and the community is being valued and heard and a part of something greater. You have done big steps since you've been here, but there's still pain when, when a male gets stopped and his daughter is in the backseat of the car, and she's screaming and she's crying, and the officer sees the arrest of the man, he forgets about the child sometime, and that child is seeing that officer through the lenses of taking her daddy. When does the peacekeeper bring about peace?
Do you need additional time?
I mean, I'll take all the time in the world.
Seriously, if you need...
Yes. Yeah, I say, I was about to leave y'all alone, but I'll, I'll take all the opportunities in the world. And so when I look at...
No, no, wait, wait, how many minutes do you need? Do you need two minutes?
I'll take two.
Three minutes?
I'll take two.
Two minutes? Okay, so do we have a motion for a two-minute extension?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, if you can call, call the roll call. Sorry that the process is longer than the, than the minutes.
Oh, it's all right.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmember Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson? Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
He's gone.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
You may proceed, you have two more minutes.
So what I'm proposing is rethink and restructure for our community. We got to rethink what we've always thought, what we always chose to do, and we got to restructure it in a way where everyone feels impacted and everyone feels valued in the situation. We were hosting community meetings where we were coming together, but most of them that were coming together to have those conversations were not the ones that were truly being impacted at the deepest levels. Are we meeting with... deepest levels. Are we meeting with the high school and middle school students where they are able to have summits and come together, developing their leadership skills, their communication skills, and their self-value? Are we talking about, when we talk about small businesses here in the community, it just can't be a one-sided thing. It has to be an everybody thing. Have we began to ignite the fire up under our young people in the community and give them value to their voice? So I'm saying, I'm here at a city council meeting. I brought my daughter to this city council meeting, but my daughter could only sit for so long in the city council meeting because she truly doesn't have a true understanding of what you're doing or the jargon that's being said. I'm just asking for change. I'm just asking for somebody to stand up and to value our young people. I'm just asking, when we arrest, are we seeing a traumatized child that's sitting in the backseat? When we're doing the arrest, are we seeing the impact of the mother that's sitting at home, and she's struggling and trying to figure out what's going on? My brother was killed at the end of April, and when he was killed, my father and my mother still do not have answers for that question. And they feel like they have been set to the side because somehow or another, we forgot that that officer in that uniform, that that detective that's going out to see that family, is the one to assist with answers, is the one to assist with bringing peace in that home and allowing those people to have a state of mind where they could heal. I'm asking us to go back. I'm asking us to rethink what we're saying and what we're doing, and how we're putting it out into the community. Everybody ain't woke right now. Just me. Bye. Love y'all.
Thank you for your comments.
Let me put my mask on. Get out of your way.
The next person signed up to speak is Anita Austin.
Hello, Council. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. I want to talk about some in-depth policy reform, and I think that must be carried out, and a lot of these points were touched on today. I know TPD supports a lot of the things that are a part of the eight that can't wait. I heard that discussion three hours ago when we were on that, but I'm bringing it back. I think that we need to have solid policy guidelines, and a lot of the policy that's referenced today has amendments to it. It has a clause, it has a but. And the things I want to talk about today are just a few policy proposals, basic policy changes that would aid in making TPD a better organization. One is a ban on chokeholds and strangleholds in all circumstances. I wrote all in all caps because right now, TPD policy 4.2.12 has the phrase, "Unless deadly force would be," which is an exception, right? We can't claim to have policies if there's an exception to everyone. Requiring a use of force continuum, which is something that was discussed, and that Black Lives Matter and the people here today support having a use of force continuum. Amending TPD policy 4.3.5, so the use of force review team is made up of majority independent citizens. This was discussed, I mean, in so many different ways. You can't have people reviewing themselves. At the end of the day, what Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala said is 100% true. It's a bad look. We need a true independent, majority independent citizen review team for use of force policy. And then I just want to add that these are not the only policy reforms that we are asking for. These are just simple and initial things that we think makes this more sound. We don't want to window dress these situations or have policy that doesn't actually address the things we're claiming it addresses. And keep this short because I think I'm at the end of a very long meeting, but that is what I have to say, and thank you guys.
Thank you very much for coming and speaking with us tonight.
Thank you.
The next person signed up to speak is Thomas Mather.
Thank you all. Don't throw anything at me. Bear with me, because this is going to sound kind of crazy at the beginning. I'm reading my reading glasses. A modest proposal. At this moment in time, our country may finally be facing up to a great schism that has existed since first we became a nation. A disconnect between our supposed ideals and the reality that plays out each and every day in our communities, where people of color continue to experience something less than the promise of all men are created equal. This rift, nowhere experienced more acutely than in interactions with police, has resulted in so much despair, turmoil, and suffering, it's far past time that we address these disparities. Toward that end, and for the better of all, I feel we need to embrace reality and set aside the fence of the notion that black people are equal to whites. While black lives matter, they clearly do not matter as much as white lives. The unrealistic idea that they do is what lies at the heart of the disconnect sweeping the nation and the prime reason behind the violent interactions with police. With that in mind, I have a few modest suggestions that should help to alleviate these problems. Let's be realistic. There are some things black people clearly have no business doing. My proposal would codify these forbidden activities to help blacks understand their place in society and reduce the tragic interactions with police. For example, we should make it a capital crime to drive while black, a capital crime to attempt to buy something with a $20 bill while black, a capital crime to run away while black, or play with a toy gun while black, or doze off in a car while black, or wear a hoodie while black, or jog while black, or stand in their own backyard while black, or sleep in their own bed while black. What was Breonna Taylor thinking? Being capital crimes, people won't get so upset when these malactors are shot by the police, and hopefully, once these suggestions become law, black people will stop committing these crimes and accept their new, that is, codified status. So things will calm down, and white people can go back to enjoying the understood peace and prosperity to which our race entitles us. If these ideas seem a bit crazy, a bit draconian, isn't the routine shooting of unarmed black people a bit draconian? Isn't it draconian that the same police who kill for no good reason usually suffer no consequences? And it seems pretty draconian to me that we reelect representatives who refuse to enact substantial reform, who instead legislate Band-Aids for the gaping wounds of racism and police brutality. So here's another crazy idea. How about we white people pull our heads out of our backsides, link arms with our black brothers and sisters, and demand that our justice system be transformed? The time is now. No excuses, no half-measures. The ideals expressed in our founding document have for too long eluded us. After 400 years of racism, we need to finally reach out and make them reality. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. At this point in time, there's the, is there an executive session, Lisa?
Do you wish to have one, Mayor? I mean, we can. I have the call if you wish. I didn't know if you talked to the manager or not.
We have to first vote to extend the meeting.
Yep.
Because it's 9:51.
Correct.
And I know that it's not, everybody's tired, and you can see it in my face. I think you can see it in everybody else's face. But I do think that we have to have a very short executive session. And then after that, by extending our time, it would allow us a chance to just wrap up with our announcements and call it a night. If you could please read the parameters.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
You would need to extend the meeting first with a motion if you wish.
Yes.
And that's what I was, I'm so sorry. That's what I was asking. Brain is not acting right. So do we have a motion to extend the meeting past 10 o'clock? Thank you, Councilwoman Ortiz. Do we have a second? Thank you, Councilwoman Nager. All those in favor who extend the meeting past 10 o'clock, which is something we would have to do, even if we do not vote for executive session so that we can do announcements. I think at this point in time, there's few of us. So everybody say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Nobody having saying aye to the opposition, the motion passes. We are extended past 10 o'clock. If the city attorney could read the parameters of the short executive session.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time, not to exceed 10 minutes, to discuss the acquisition of real property as justified by KSA 75-4319B6. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: members of the governing body, City Manager Brent Trout, and myself. No action is anticipated to be taken when the open meeting resumes in the governing body chambers.
Do we have a motion? Councilwoman Nager makes a motion, seconded by Councilwoman Padilla. All those in favor of entering into the executive session, not to exceed 10 minutes, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We now recess into a short executive session. Taylor, let me know when we're ready. We now proceed to the announcements of the council. City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. The preliminary agenda for July 14, 2020. On the agenda, there is one proclamation, one presentation, and two special event applications, and one noise exception. For the action item, there is approval of an amendment to the 2018 Consolidated Action Plan, and ordinance regarding the execution of search warrants, no knock ban, approval of 2021 transient guest tax allocations, and a notice of public hearing date 2021 operating budget. And the non-action items, excuse me, one is a discussion for the Vica Citywide Housing Market Study and Strategy. Second item is discussion of the 2021 operating budget. Third item is discussion of establishment of Special Committee Public Infrastructure Review. And that is all, Mayor.
Thank you very much. City Manager?
Nothing to deny.
Councilwoman Duncan?
Oh, I could not hear you. Sorry. Just a couple of quick things. The first is, thank you to Kelly. I believe this is her first meeting, filling in and doing that role. I don't know, Deputy Assistant City Clerk, I can't, I don't know which one it is, but that's her role. So thank you. Welcome, and we're glad you were here tonight to fill in, and I'm sure you'll do it many more times. So just wanted to say, well done. The second thing I want to say is, and I put this out on social media yesterday, just a reminder to folks, the mask ordinance is in place beginning tomorrow, passed by the county. Whether you like it, whether you don't like it, you're going to go into stores in which you're going to be asked to please wear the mask, and the people asking you have nothing to do with this policy. They didn't put it in place, they had no control over it. All they're being asked by their county and their state and their employer is to ask you to do it. So don't yell at them, be nice to them, say thank you for at least having a job, you know, being able to do your job. You can come yell at us, who are elected officials, about this stuff. That's fine. That's what we're here for. But leave the people who are just trying to do their job alone and treat them with some respect and kindness, please, because it has nothing to do with them. So I would throw that out there. The last thing is, and I guess this is directed more at City Manager and staff, is it's a request of sorts. I know that we are moving forward now, soon, any time, on a city hall renovation, being, I guess, still sort of new. I had no part in that process. I'm unaware of how that process worked, of what was approved or not approved by the council, of what's happening, when it's happening, what the timeline is. So if we could please get some sort of update, refresher information on where we are at in that process and what's happening with all that, and what has and hasn't occurred, or if things still need to occur as it relates to the city council, that would be much appreciated. Had some questions about that, and so I don't know the answers. So I would, if we could get that done sometime, it would be, thank you for that. So that's my request, and that's all I've got.
Councilwoman Lesser? Councilwoman Heller?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to run with what Councilman Duncan said a little bit differently and thank the county commissioners. We all got a tremendous amount of input when people were concerned on Thursday that they were not making a decision. At least what I heard, the preponderance was concerned that the masking order should go through. I really appreciate the diligence that they put into that decision and appreciate that now we have something. I have appreciated all along, in fact, their great work on this as well as that of the governor, and have found that my best ability to visit with citizens about it was to say that we had no role in that at all, except to support the county and the governor. And so appreciate everyone's efforts and got my mask. Thank you. That's it.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. District 2, you rock slowly but surely. We're getting our alleys done. Want to thank Shawnee County Parks and Recreation for working with us on issues at Santa Fe Park. Everybody wear your masks. Take care of each other. Also, something I should have said a long time ago, always remember, we are on indigenous land and Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz? Deputy Mayor is not here. Councilwoman Padilla?
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, I want to remind people that we're still doing the complete count census. And here recently, if you've been looking around town, you've seen those Topeka Counts signs in the yards. They're going to be distributing more of those, so I would ask each council member to think of those places, even their own homes or high-visibility places. We can place those signs so we can continue to be counted in the census. Now, again, it's a reminder I've said before, we talk about resources, and it all comes back to the data that's gathered through the census. So please do everything you can to help promote that as much as possible. I thank everybody for wearing their masks when they can, and I hope everybody stays safe. And best wishes. I'm glad Matt and you, Mayor, are doing well. Best wishes to Tony. I hope everything goes well for him. And Brett, I hope you're able to sit down sometime soon. You keep looking like you're going backwards, back. And I feel your pain, buddy. I've been there. Thank you.
I made it, though.
I was going to say stubborn. I still said it. Before I go to Councilwoman Nager, I'm so sorry. I do want to say thank you to the commissioners for the wise decision of the masks for our community. It was a very concerning moment for pretty much everybody in the council, to be honest. And we are extremely proud of the work that the commission did. I want to, I'm so sorry, I have the hiccups. I want to extend my appreciation to Commissioner Rippon, Commissioner May, and also Commissioner Cook for all the hard work that they did, and especially as well for Dusty Nichols, Dr. Baccino, and Linda Oaks, who were amazing with all the work that they were doing. They are silent heroes and often don't get the credit for all the work that they do. Councilwoman Nager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to kind of expand upon that with the mask. As somebody who works in the health community and really is one of the most exposed people, I wear, I come into work, I change into my scrubs, I change into my work shoes, I put on an N95, I put on a surgical mask, I put on my eye protection, I put on a face shield, and I put on a gown. That is what I wear every day. And so to have us all work as a team out in the community, wearing the mask and making sure that we're doing everything to keep our germs to ourselves, is something that's imperative to keeping this under... to keep our germs to ourselves, is something that's imperative to keeping this under, better under control and keeping our economy going. So I absolutely support what has been done with the commission. Thank you so much for getting that passed, and thank you for going through all of the work to make sure that it was going to be something that was going to be supportive of our community. I say, everything that I wear on a daily basis, to just put into perspective, wearing a mask is just the right thing to do. It's the bare minimum of, in my opinion, human decency, to make sure that you are doing your part to keep you and your loved ones and your community safe. So I absolutely support what they have gone ahead and passed. I also want to express my appreciation to Arts Connect. This past weekend, several of us got to be a part of reading Frederick Douglass's What the Slave Is the Fourth of July, an oration that was very powerful and is still very poignant today. It was a great opportunity, and Councilwoman Hiller and Mayor De La Isla were also a part of that, as, as well as almost around 40 other community members. And it was a really great opportunity to be a part of that. I'm excited for, to continue these conversations about rights, about iniquity, and about making sure that we're really focusing on our black, indigenous, and other people of color in our community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Have a great evening, everybody. Thank you for sticking with us tonight.